All right, we're good.
So when do you like, so when do we, when do we, so I, so here's what the other group said.
All right, I'm gonna, after that. Meeting to order at 6:03 PM, um, a call must be met, there are three of us in the room and one on the phone and one on the way. So if I can get ahold of all this.
Mr. Gray, Mr. Bidman.
Here.
Mr. Troy, Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
With that, we move ahead to number two, the pledge allegiance, I think we have some manufacturing students as part of Huntley High School.
Hello, hi, I am not a student at Huntley High School, but I am Micah Kennedy, I am a director of curriculum here and in addition to that, I work on multiple boards and teams at the national, state and county level. One of those is the Manufacturing Pathways Consortium of McHenry County, um, and I've been involved with this group since its inception in 2019 and their mission is fairly clear. They want to cultivate talent in the manufacturing sector locally, and so really that's what they want to do, they want to find local talent and grow the manufacturing sector. Um, when we talk about manufacturing, we're not just talking about assembly line work, we're talking about a broad range of skills, so we're talking about everything that goes in there, we're talking about the accounting, we're talking about the business, the management, um, engineering, programming, networking, all of the different things. So this consortium is a very large group, has over 200 members, including every single unit district and high school district in the county and about 80 different manufacturers, uh, which is just a small fraction of the manufacturers throughout McHenry County, because there are about 500 businesses that identify themselves as manufacturing throughout McHenry County. So, you're probably wondering, if we're going to be recognizing students that did something really cool over the summer, why are we waiting all the way until October? So October is manufacturing month throughout the state of Illinois, so while these students got to participate in a really exciting rotational internship experience over the summer, we're doing that now, and so we recognize that throughout this month and we have lots of events. We have shop tours that are happening right now, uh, we have a networking breakfast that's going to be at McHenry County College and a comprehensive, um, manufacturing trade and industry expo for students that was held, uh, just recently up in McHenry. Even just here, two days ago, we had one of our partners, Jessup Manufacturing, came out and talked to our eighth graders at Marlowe Middle School, so, uh, continue to find new ways to interact with students, and we're going to have all of our eighth graders hopefully participating in a career expo at McHenry County College in early March. So while we recognize these students tonight, I kind of want to talk about the program a little bit, so they got to work with two different manufacturers over the summer, each one for a period of five weeks, they had a guaranteed wage of $16 an hour during that time, and we had 22 students who ultimately went through this experience. There were 89 students throughout the entire county that actually did this, so that means Huntley's share of that was almost a quarter of the student population, and we had the exact same population last year, so again, 89 students and 22 of them were from Huntley. Um, our students worked at a total of 15 different locations throughout the county, uh, this experience was open to any student who was 16 years old by the time the internship program began, um, and we've seen some Huntley students who did it last year, reapplied again this year. Uh, we had one student who, due to their experience, was offered an internship experience next summer, where they're actually going to pay for part of his college as well, uh, and we had another student who's doing something really exciting due to their experience, but they're here tonight, so I'm going to let them, uh, share that. So collectively, students in Huntley worked 3,840 hours over the summer, that's an average of 180 hours per student, at $16 an hour, that's about an average income of about $2,880 per student over the summer. Uh, collectively, for all those hours, Huntley students earned collectively $61,440, so over the summer. So, in Huntley, our mission is quite clear, we want to make sure that all of our students have options, they're prepared for college, career and life, and we want to make sure that they have options and opportunities to hit one of the three E's, enrollment, employment or enlistment. So, uh, when we talk about readiness, we're not just talking about being ready for anything, it's talking about that adaptability for life in a constantly changing world. So as we talk to students who participated in this experience, we kind of said, what were some of the takeaways? And we heard from our students that they had transferable skills from the classroom that they were able to apply, some of those that they mentioned were computer modeling, sensor testing, assessing and recognizing safety protocols, critical thinking and maintaining a positive mindset. So even when our students, the same systems weren't being utilized, they were able to utilize the skills that they acquired in the classroom in the workplace, which again is incredibly exciting. So, we are so proud of our students and how well they represented Huntley over the summer, um, and I would love to recognize them if they come up here. And while they're coming up here, I also want to recognize somebody else in the audience, um, Tracy Champion, who is our college and career pathway endorsement coordinator for the county. Um, we partner with Tracy, Tracy kind of works out of the regional office of education, but she partners with all of the high schools throughout the county to really, um, expand internship and work-based learning opportunities for students, so that way they can earn college and career pathway endorsements as recognized through the Illinois State Board of Education. So with that, I'd love to have the students come up here, say their name and share one cool experience that they had over the summer.
My name is Vincent Manzella, and I did a five-week program off at Scott Forge, I worked in the maintenance department, and probably my favorite part of that experience was just the men I got to work with and the things that they taught me every day, and the variety of things I got to see each day and help them work on, and overall, it was a really cool experience.
Hello, my name's Luke Colosey, uh, I did the five-week program also, and I worked at Pet Dine, oh, we made a lot of pet treats for pets, so yeah, it was pretty cool. Um, yeah, I, my probably favorite part was meeting a lot of people from different schools actually, because I didn't realize how many schools were in this, um, one person actually came from a school that only had like a graduate number of like 100 people, and like, it was pretty crazy, I didn't think there was schools that small. But, uh, yeah, I, my, uh, my second favorite part was, uh, doing like a job shadow kind of thing also with the plant manager there, and I got to learn a lot about the business side of things also.
Hello, my name is Donovan Doyle, I was also in this program, I, I worked, I did the internship at Scott Forge, I was part of the machine shop floor, uh, my, my favorite experience about it was just like how welcoming and fun it was and just learning about all about like the manufacturing, manufacturing process over in that sector.
Hello, I'm Daniel Mepsomel, um, I worked at International Drawing Corporation, um, I had some great experience with a lot of great people and ended up getting a job at the end of the summer, I put a job accepted, and I, all in all, great experience.
Great, now we do the pledge.
I.
Do you have pictures? Yep, pictures. Parents, do you want the pictures? Mr. Bidman's hit in, so those in the front.
Are we in the way?
Uh, Miss Walmart, go to your right. There you go, there we go, there we go.
That might come to you right there.
Yeah, and as you know, time for questions or anything like that, um, as they're leaving, but those programs are outstanding, uh, I work in a different county, I work in Newark County, uh, and we utilize this all the time for our course, and it's a great way, just not everybody wants to go to college, and there's, there are a lot of opportunities out there, and, uh, I, I just, I wonder if there's, there's room for more businesses to join ones in McHenry County, it's, it's a good thing to do and people need to be aware of it. All right, with that, number three, building and student highlights, Ms. Walmart.
Well, great, oh, I'll turn that on, okay, so, uh, for those of you who were here last month, we talked about we wanted to add an agenda item, um, each month, and that was the student highlights, I think they're towards the end there, but we'll get that moving and moving. So for those of you that are new, um, students know the reason we're here, and we often hear from the administrators, we hear from the staff, and at times we hear from the students, but, um, thought it would be really great for each month, a different school to be highlighted, and while we would want all of our students' voices in here, it's kind of hard to get all of those at once in this part of that. But we're going to continue ways that we can get student voice, and I reached out to Conley Elementary and said, hey, could you be our first ones, our guinea pigs, and I know it's elementary, and they said, we've got the perfect students for that, and I went on over and met with these two fine individuals, and we talked a little bit about what is the role of the school board, and Liam knew right away, right? He knew the kinds of things that the school board did, and I said, and you know what, they want to hear from you, they want to hear from you as the students, and so they've got a presentation together, and we all had to remind ourselves as adults, this is all about their voice and what they wanted to hear, and I want to give just a little background about Conley, and then we're going to turn it on over to you guys. But, um, Conley was one of our buildings on this campus, it's a third, fourth and fifth grade building, and, um, Mr. Mark, can you go to the first slide down there, that's okay, um, with that, currently we have 567 students. Conley Elementary, you guys might not know this one, but is named after a former Huntley teacher, Marion Conley, who taught here in 1926, their home of the Coyotes, and that very first class that came in, those group of third, fourth and fifth grade students, got to select that mascot, and they are led by Dr. Hoyu and Mrs. Surgeon. And every year, our elementary schools have a theme, and I believe they started this theme that we've got, I want to just show you a little bit, um, about their theme to get, set the stage of what all the adults and all the students are kind of focused on, the 2022, 20, or 2324, um, theme is discovering greatness by digging within. So we're going to have a little less than a minute video, and then we're going to turn it on over to Kendall Chrome and Liam Black, and they are going to take us through, I gave a few guiding questions, but I know they have some ideas of, of their own as well, so we'll start with that video. Okay, you click out of that, I'm going to reshare it.
There it is.
Oh, there you got it, there we go, okay, that's, come on, yep. Paul, Zach, we can't hear it, maybe use the microphone, right, we need sound, we need. We will have this posted, if you want to go back and listen to it, it's, it's great, but it's all about digging within, and so we asked Kendall and Liam to dig within our fifth graders in Mrs. Charles's class, and to really let us know what they wanted us to know about Conley, so take it away.
So, uh, so first, um, slide is Conley is a very special place to learn, because Conley teachers aren't strict, they are nice, teachers at Conley love being funny, but at the same time, they're teaching each other. The teachers at Conley have creative and fun ways to help us learn when we need help, they will help you as soon as they can, the teachers make you feel comfortable for you to speak and share your thoughts with them. The teachers also are very collaborative when it comes to having a lot of questions, and they're not going to judge you when you get an answer wrong. What also makes Conley a very special place to learn is that they give us awards and make the environment a secure, safe and fun place to learn. Let us show you the class treasure chest. This year's theme is digging for greatness, and our classes can be a gem by earning a class score.
So the next slide is about, um, some of our highlights from ourlearningexperience@conley. One highlight from ourlearningexperience@conley.
If I were leading a tour for a new student and their family that wanted to attend Conley, I would show them the rock walls, all the gyms, and the playgrounds. I would show them all the classrooms and introduce them to the teachers. I would also show them the display case and show them all the accomplishments that the school had. Some of the accom- uh, accomplishments are the newspaper art choice, Christopher Taught certificate, and the animal shelter, animal shelter donations. I would also show them the band and orchestra room.
Next, the next slide is if I were the principal, what would I change or add in the school? We would like to add more recess because it gives people more opportunity to have physical activity and more freedom to run and play. We would also like to add a code red drill during recess or any time of the day when we're outside. I would also like to add more equipment when it comes to recess for, an example, jump ropes, new basketballs, new footballs, new soccer balls, and more four square balls.
Are we ready for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we're just going to show a video about this slide.
Welcome to Conley. A theme this year is growing the community of greatness. Today, we'll be taking you on a tour throughout Conley. This year, our display case is inspired by Lenny and the Angel.
Two microphones.
This is a playground, you can play football, soccer, four square, and hot chocolate. If you need help, can you call the team, we'll be there. Conley is a special place to learn if the teacher is willing to help you. Wanting, showing, is, all the students are willing to help you and care for each other. Tell us your, from what other Conley students have to say about how, what makes Conley a special place to learn. We have amazing teachers and we get community names. I'm such a player, you know. The best thing about Conley is when you make new friends and hang out with them every day. Conley, I'm looking at the great place to learn because of the, because every stat number and kid here is very nice, kind of helpful. There are also lots of cool kids to flourish, to expand, it is like a really awesome place. One highlight from my talent game is the teachers make the practice so safe and comfortable, also the students are nice and caring. One highlight from mylearningexperience@conley is I learned that not to go off the computer. If I was the principal, I would add fifteen minutes to PE. If I was the principal, I'd give the kids a lunch or get a hot lunch option if they want dessert. Just another comment here on what they would do if they were in the school. If I were principal, I would add new basketball courts for outside and, and games for, to classrooms for, uh, extremely. If I were being the principal, I would bring nothing and give it back to Dr. Hoyu.
Liam, can I ask you a question? You brought up code red drill, you would have a code red drill during recess, can you explain that a little bit?
So, code red drill is like when someone's bad that's in the building or out, or, um, outside the building. So, and either is like trying to hurt people or trying to like see someone.
So, you practice it inside, but maybe did you, if you were outside, whether it was during recess or an outdoor activity, just so you know what to do, is that what you were kind of engaged?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you. Any questions, Mark?
I have one. So, uh, either one of you or both of you can answer this. So, the theme is discovering greatness. What does greatness mean to you?
Greatness means to me like, being great and like, wait. Okay, right. Oh, wait, um, making, like, the school, like, making other students feel like they can, like, be, like, oh, like, feel comfortable and have their opinion and they won't get like, like yelled at or screamed at, like, kind of like a good environment.
Not bad.
Well, greatness means to me is like, um, students being, um, happy with the school and not like hating the school and hating the teachers at the school.
All right, one last thing, that's not a question, but a little birdie told me that it is Kendall's birthday today. So, I'm going to ask the entire room to sing happy birthday, is that okay? All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kendall. Happy birthday to you. Uh, when you get a picture with you two, can you come on up and get a picture? Kendall smiles. Kendall smiles. Mr. Thompson, go to your right a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
Great. Happy birthday. I think that's a good addition to the agenda.
They were great.
All right, uh, let's move on to number four, public comments. All right, with that, uh, we move to public comments, number four, we have one public comment, Melissa.
So, this is what it looks like from here. Good evening, thank you, it's nice to see everyone again. Um, I really want to start by saying that my public comment this evening is coming from a genuine place of care and concern for the, for the district. That has not changed, um, since May when I walked out of the boardroom and it, it remains and, and I stay committed to the district and, and really, um, keeping everyone safe. And my comment is not about any specific student activity within the district, but I am here tonight with another concern about revenue contracts for the district. Back in March, uh, March ninth, um, when I was still on the board, I had raised concerns about a revenue contract that had not been approved and yet the fundraiser, raiser had started. And at that time, you know, Dr. Rowe had stated, you know, to your point, there should not be selling if there hasn't been approval by the school board and that, um, there's been conversations to make sure that this does not happen again. Later in that discussion, Mr. Almeyer had clarified that the reason this was coming to the board, um, was because we needed to review revenue contracts for anything over a thousand dollars per state code, um, and that what the board is approving, um, the fundraiser has essentially already been approved at the building level and has received finance approval, but with the timing of the board meeting, it hadn't come to the board for its approval. So, that being said, on this month's revenue contract report, there are nine revenue contracts listed for board approval. Five of those revenue contracts, football, boys golf, girls golf, girl and boy soccer, and volleyball, do not have building or finance approval despite being signed by their coaches back in May. These teams respectively held their fundraisers in August and I am concerned about what's happening and that the district not breaking its own policies along with, um, state code, and when I say code. So, I'm just requesting that maybe the board consider reviewing their policy and procedures for activity fundraisers and maybe implementing a system of checks and balances. Um, you know, the fundraisers are great and I believe that we should have them and they are so important to keep our activities going. I just want to make sure that everything is transparent, like with football, I mean, they, they asked for seventy-five thousand, I think they raised eighty-two thousand, that is a lot of money. Um, and, and it's, again, these are repeated fundraisers, but I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we're not breaking any policies or any laws. So, I'm doing it as, as a protection for the district. And I thank you.
Thank you for the comment. All right, with that, we move to number five, revision and adoption of the agenda. Are there any, uh, changes that anybody would like to see through the agenda? All right, with that, uh, we will do a voice call to, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So, we'll do a voice call, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, the motion passes. We will move on to number six, the finance committee. Uh, Mr. Hogg, now, if you could hear us, do you want to lead that or do you want to, Mr. Thompson, right over?
I'll, I'll try and lead and see if it works. If it's not, we'll switch over to you to lead it. Okay? All right, so, item six, uh, payables, uh, we have our purchase orders, press checks, accounts payable, dispersments listed, um, in our agenda. Do, uh, any members of the committee have any questions or concerns related to those items?
I don't.
No. And remember, I can't see your heads nodding one way or the other.
Yeah, we're, we're, I don't know if you can hear us, we're, we're, Mike and I are both good. Mr. Thompson.
Okay. All right, um, if, does anybody else on the, does anyone on the committee have any questions related to those items?
No.
If not, we'll move those forward to the, uh, board meeting for approval and consent. Item, uh, six, that two is the monthly fiscal updates. Uh, Mr. Almeyer.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a few things to highlight as well as the board had requested that I provide a little more information on the activities and athletics. So, I've included that as part of my fiscal memo, so I will give an update there as well. Uh, just an update on the audit, the audit is done. Um, we're, we're finalizing, uh, the MDNA and a few things and the audit partner will be here at the November committee, the whole meeting to present that. Um, as discussed at the last, uh, board meeting, uh, not, not providing an exact operating deficit, uh, but we did know that we were going to end up in an operating deficit position primarily driven by, um, health insurance and contracted services, but we did end the year with an operating deficit of five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, the deficit is primarily driven, well, by health insurance and, uh, contracted services being extremely negative, but offset by, offset by the favorability of things we've talked about in the past, such as CP, BRT, interest earnings, as well as some state funding for transportation reimbursement and the private facility reimbursement as the preparation for those categorical grants came in higher than what we expected when the budget came out early in the year. So, uh, more information to follow, but did want to let the board know that, uh, that number as well as let the board know that the audit partner will be out, uh, at the committee of the whole meeting in November. Preliminary EAV, normally it's about this time of year where from both counties, we receive the preliminary EAV reports and that report is important because it provides us, well, it provides us with EAV for the county, counties, but it also provides us with our new construction estimate, a very, very preliminary estimate of new construction. Um, and we have only received that report from McHenry County, not yet Kane County. Um, and I'm hesitant to share the new construction number because historically, McHenry County over the last few years has not been doing a good job, um, providing a good preliminary number. Uh, that being said, the new construction that's currently in that report is about eleven million dollars, which is good. Um, but I do expect that to change over the next month or two as we come closer to finalizing that EAV report, so stay tuned over the next month or two. Uh, they are often changing that report and updating those new construction numbers. So, uh, we will continue to keep the board apprised and that's important as we walk into the levy season over the next few months. Uh, also wanted to note that, uh, we did enter the final phases of the district debt restructuring plan. It was at this time last year where we, the board approved a refunding opportunity that was to be closed on October sixth of twenty twenty-three. Well, that was just, uh, a week ago or so. Um, and so, we officially now have a series twenty twenty-three A, general obligation refunding school bond for twelve point four seven million dollars and that closed on October sixth. Uh, Mr. Bitman signed a lot of those documents at the last board meeting and, uh, so just wanted to let the board know about that. And other than that, that's all I have for the main fiscal updates. I'd like to talk a little bit about activities and athletics. The board had asked me to provide a little background, a little information on activities and athletics and there's a very, there's a, a distinction between both, but today, the district as a whole provides over two hundred and sixty different opportunities for students to engage in activities or athletics from elementary to high school. Um, and these activities and athletics, well, I think we all know have long-lasting definitive benefits for our student body. So, activities, I want to start with activities and each month, as part of your fiscal updates, the board does receive a district activity fund balance report, okay? And that report summarizes the district's activity accounting on our district's activity accounts, okay? Those accounts, those revenues and expenditures, and it's important to note that when we talk about a million dollars, for instance, being budgeted for activity accounting, well, that's just a dollar amount in the budget, but activity accounting for the majority of our activity account does not- as the proration for those categorical grants came in higher than what we expected when the budget came out early in the year. So, uh, more information to follow, but did want to let the board know that, uh, that number as well as let the board know that the audit partner will be out, uh, at the committee, the whole meeting in November. Preliminary EAV, normally it's about this time of year where from both counties, we receive the preliminary EAV reports and that report is important because it provides us, well, it provides us with EAV for the county, counties, but it also provides us with our new construction estimate, a very, very preliminary estimate of new construction. Um, and we have only received that report from McHenry County, not yet Kane County. Um, and I'm hesitant to share the new construction number because historically, McHenry County over the last few years has not been doing a good job, um, providing a good preliminary number. Uh, that being said, the new construction that's currently in that report is about eleven million dollars, which is good. Um, but I do expect that to change over the next month or two as we come closer to finalizing that EAV report. So stay tuned over the next month or two. Uh, they are often changing that report and updating those new construction numbers. So, uh, we will continue to keep the board apprised and that's important as we walk into the levy season over the next few months. Uh, also wanted to note that, uh, we did enter the final phases of the district debt restructuring plan. It was at this time last year where we, the board approved a refunding opportunity that was to be closed on October sixth of twenty twenty-three. Well, that was just, uh, a week ago or so. Um, and so we officially now have a series twenty twenty-three A general obligation refunding school bond for twelve point four seven million dollars and that closed on October sixth. Uh, Mr. Bittman signed a lot of those documents at the last board meeting and, uh, so just wanted to let the board know about that. And other than that, that's all I have for the main fiscal updates. I'd like to talk a little bit about activities and athletics. The board had asked me to provide a little background, a little information on activities and athletics and there's a very, there's a, a distinction between both, but today the district as a whole provides over two hundred and sixty different opportunities for students to engage in activities or athletics from elementary to high school. Um, and these activities and athletics, well, I think we all know have long lasting definitive benefits for our student body. So activities, I want to start with activities and each month as part of your fiscal updates, the board does receive a district activity fund balance report. Okay. And that report summarizes the district's activity accounting on our district's activity accounts. Okay. Those accounts, those revenues and expenditures, and it's important to note that when we talk about a million dollars, for instance, being budgeted for activity accounting, well, that's just a dollar amount in the budget, but activity accounting for the majority of our activity account does not impact the board general ledger. There's a separate general ledger for activity accounts because these are accounts that, well, they're money raised by students for students and also we're simply managing those accounts on their behalf. Okay. Now, we have teachers, we have staff that head up a lot of those clubs, whether it's the chess club or, or you name it, the ecology club. We have a lot of different clubs and, and for all of those different opportunities and clubs, there's a stipend to be paid. Well, those stipends are not paid out of the activity general ledger. They're actually paid out of the board general ledger, but we actually pay those. So the, those are dollars that we are incurring on behalf of the students. But make no mistake, revenues raised by the students for the students are used for the students and that's why they're separate from the district's accounting records. So we kind of have two sets, sets of accounting records, but in order to keep transparent for you and the community, we provide you that monthly report. Um, I did provide a visual of the activity accounts that we have by school type. So at the elementary, we have seven, seventy different activity accounts. At Heinemann and middle school or Marlowe Middle School, they each have thirty-three and the high school having the majority of our clubs and activities for our students. Okay. I also provide an example of what is being provided on a monthly basis to the board. Other highlights to note just with activity accounts, average cash balances for all activity accounts on a monthly basis. We're carrying a lot of cash on behalf of those activity accounts. They raise a lot of money throughout the year, but they also use a lot of money throughout the year and it approximates nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Activity accounts are managed by, we have a district accounting supervisor. That's one of his main jobs with oversight by the director of finance and certainly myself. Some of the largest activity accounts include student council, football cheerleading, and those are funds that are used for trips and camps and equipment as needed throughout the year for the students. This past year and it's also important to note because the ECC plays a vital role in making sure that we have very good activity accounts and clubs for our students and we continue to have opportunities for our students at the elementary, middle school and high school. So we're constantly looking at new clubs. And this past year, the board approved eight additional clubs and approximately, and this is, this is a big one, twenty additional trial activities last year that are actually taking place this year. Okay. Uh, trial activities and clubs and I further note, um, that have a significant student interest, they receive a three hundred dollar stipend to move forward as a trial, uh, activity. In year two, if that activity continues, they'll be awarded a five hundred dollar stipend and then they're evaluated, evaluated again by the committee to see if they move forward as a fully paid, stipended type of club and/or activity. That's what I wanted to point out for activities. On the athletic side, um, what I think you need to know or might be helpful to know is athletics expenses are coded in the general ledger under function code fifteen hundred and that's interscholastic program. Okay. Uh, their co-curricular activities will supplement the regular instructional programs such as athletic, athletic band, chorus and speech. The district's FY twenty-four general letter ledger fifteen hundred interscholastic programs, the budget approximates two point three million dollars, which salaries and benefits primarily because of the club and activity and athletic stipend, as well as the athletic office salaries, um, is one point nine million dollars of that amount. Purchase services and supplies make up the difference at one hundred and ninety thousand and one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars respectively. I thought it would be interesting to show, you know, we like to benchmark our expenses on a per student basis versus other districts. Um, not necessarily something that we're proud of, but, but we do show that on a per student basis, we're kind of near, near the average. There's a lot of other districts that, that showed up here that are spending a little more on those student clubs and activity. Um, and we're at three hundred dollars per student on average today. Other key data points I provided were gate admission fees and athletic fees revenues, which approximate forty-five and eighty-eight thousand dollars respectively, uh, budgeted. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I appreciate you putting it together. I know I asked for some of this and I thought for anybody out there, we drew it. There's a lot of the detail in there. Um, and I think it helps enlighten things. So, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, the activity fee that we pay when we sign up for athletics or a club is, is how much roughly per student?
Uh, middle school is forty dollars, uh, forty dollars. I think that's for both and then seventy-five dollar athletic fee at the high school.
Okay. So that's, that's actually in comparison to roughly three hundred dollars per student, that's not that much. It's not covering the cost. So we are definitely, you're definitely getting a good deal.
Correct.
Okay. Cause I, I know a lot of people talk about the different fees and things like that. It's not covering the cost, I, I, I think is what it comes down to. Right. So we're, we're funding that at the local meetings as well. Uh, I, I actually thought the, uh, admissions was going to be a little bit higher than that. Eight thousand?
Yeah, there's, um, it's, we, we have recently gone to an online, uh, system, um, where we can take funds electronically. Um, but yeah, it's, that's pretty average, especially within the Five Valley and other districts that I've compared against, uh, for what we collect for admission.
And then the registration fee also probably goes towards some of this, right? As you register a student in some ways, we can argue that.
Yeah, registration piece, you know, we haven't as a district raised our registration piece in a long, long time. Um, and they generally cover, right, they're not specifically allocated to any specific expense. They cover, you know, when I, when I, when I parents call in all the time, I let them know that they, well, they cover everything. They help support the things that we provide students, whether it's, um, whether it's the paperwork, right? Uh, disposables, is that what we call them? I forget. What do we call them in curricul?
Consumables.
Consumables, that's amazing. You know, a lot of it is for consumables, but a lot of it is just for everything, everything we do. Um, unfortunately, here in Illinois, um, we need an additional funding source and school districts across the state rely on registration fees to cover a lot of different things from supplies in the classroom, the purchase services, um, consumables. So I don't really have a definitive answer on what we use that money for because it's really used for everything. I, I appreciate you putting it together. There's a lot of information in there. Thank you.
Hey, hey, Mark. You actually have a person in your office who's almost solely dedicated to accounting for this, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have the, uh, and that position to many other things, but we do have one dedicated person specifically for activity accounting, which is very common in districts our side.
No, right. I mean, it's, it's, the point being, it's, it's a pretty substantial task, doing it with the large volume of funds, uh, that are going on because there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going in and out. So, uh, but it's also the point of trying to maintain the integrity of it and, and there is a dedicated person to doing that with oversight. So, um, that's, um, it's a good thing. So, um, I don't have any further questions, anybody else, uh, from the committee or board?
No.
Concerning the, uh, activity funds and their accounting?
I think we're good, sir.
Okay. Um, so, Mark, did you have anything further on your, cause you were still in your, uh, fiscal updates?
Correct. Uh, the next item on the agenda, six point three, revenue and expenditure report.
Right. So you can move on to that if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you very much. In front of, uh, in front of you, the board has the August twenty twenty-three financial executive summary. Two months into the school year, I think you'll notice that, uh, fiscal year twenty-four year to date, we're currently running a deficit, uh, which is very normal, uh, the first few months of the school year because, uh, the majority of our expenses that are significantly beyond, uh, two months during the year, uh, one line item, for instance, if you look at capital expenditures, we've incurred two point two million of the four point two million dollar overall budget and, and I do presume in the next few months, we're going to be at a hundred percent on that capital outline, uh, capital outlay line item. The other line item that is generally ramps up very quickly at the beginning of the school year is purchase services and that line item, line item is at twenty-eight percent of the budget. So it's really those two line items, uh, combined that are driving that. But other than that, really nothing, nothing of concern two months into the school year. On page two of the financial executive summary, we continue to provide, um, insurance, uh, on health, healthcare and I'm sure we're going to talk about healthcare later on. There's another agenda item, so I'll leave that for later. Um, and other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but two months into the year, uh, I'm not seeing anything of concern, uh, versus budget. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just gonna, it, not a big deal. I know this is just a little error, I think, in the, uh, and, and the insurance, the average monthly claims in that August column, I think it's not one point.
Yeah. Correct. It's actually one million zero one six. I do have that.
Yeah, I promise.
I have it somewhere.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, okay. Any other questions from Mr. Almeyer concerning this, uh, report?
No, I, I'm, no, I do not. I know.
Okay, very good. Um, so then we would be on to item six dot four, which is our revenue contracts. I believe that was, is Meyerino giving the public comment earlier. Um, so she's right, there's nine revenue contracts and the, uh, it's a unusually high volume, um, on there. So, um, so, I mean, Mark, I mean, how, how would you directly address her concerns about the timing of how this stuff comes to us?
Yeah, she, she certainly set the stage for this comment because we were going to talk about this when this came up because there was a reason why Mr. Beal and or myself didn't sign off on, on a lot of these, right? There are nine here and there are five or six that, well, didn't move forward in the process and a lot of these fundraisers, like the football card program, right? A lot of these we do on an annual basis, year after year after year. And a lot of these programs, especially on the sports side, the fall sports side, they do the same program year after year after year. And I think what ended up happening, and we did button down a lot of our processes, but you're absolutely right, they need to be buttoned down just a little more because what we found was, well, these fundraisers went off and they happened because, and the coaches, well, they, they continued to run the fundraisers they, they do on an annual basis. And these fundraiser forums, while we're in the athletic office and they never made their way to the principal office and they never weighed their way to the finance office. And unfortunately, we have no idea, right? And, and sometimes the market doesn't, right? You've got the start of the school year going on. So, um, so we are buttoning up our processes within every department that if a fundraiser is going off, that form needs to be forwarded, right?
Yeah, you want to have a, you want to have a control sheet for these revenue contracts that kind of tracks the fact that the timing of where they're at in their, in their progress is what you probably need to have. And that's probably what you're talking about, but
Exactly.
Revenue contract control, um, spreadsheet that more or less, no, so that you do, so that you do have an idea of what's outstanding that needs to be, the documents need to come forward to you.
Yeah. And I can't, you know, I can't, um, tell you exactly what happened there, but I know that, that office, especially over the summer, there's a lot of summer camps going on. I know in the fall, there is a, there is a lot going on to start the school year. There's absolutely a lot going on. Um, it, it, it's, it's not an excuse because it absolutely should not happen. Um, but it did and keeping in line with the approval process, we did want to bring these forward to the board to, to let you know what happened, um, to still have these approved because, well, these are fundraisers that have already moved forward. Uh, and for that same reason, because they, these fundraisers have already happened, that is the reason why Mr. Beal and myself didn't sign off on these, uh, but rather we wanted to bring these to the board to talk to you about that.
And one of the things, um, that we can do to tighten up and circle back on that is for the coaches to get something back so that they know that it has gone through that process for that approval. And I don't think that's a, a part of that process yet. So coach all well intentioned, these things have gone through. If they don't know it hasn't been approved, we've got to circle back on that. And so I think that's one last piece that we can do that will close the loop on that and that would let them know, hey, if we don't get this back, um, we don't move forward or we go tap on the shoulder of whoever it was that was turned in, whereas, um, the delay or why is it pulling back? And so, again, no excuse, um, those five should have come forward. They did not and, um, we will do better on them.
So, so I can understand that a little better. The contracts are between the provider and the school, correct? Or the district or, or the program?
Correct.
And so if it didn't go through the proper channels or how, how does that, is, is a coach signing on behalf of, of the school and then assuming the liability from, you know, from a legal standpoint?
Correct. With many of these fundraisers, the coach and or the athletic director, I think gets involved and signs off. But many of these, right, uh, are, are such long standing programs, especially football programs, um, that oftentimes it is the coach.
So it could have been assumed that, oh, this is something we always do. It's a phone call. Uh, we're just going to renew your, uh, agreement and, and such.
Correct.
And so, um, both for Mr. Almeyer and, and for, for Ms. Lombard, what do you see is the, the process in, in play to secure not only these agreements, but it could be, you know, any kind of maintenance agreements or anything else that falls, you know, in between the, the proper channels and, and, you know, an intermediary, be it a coach or, or whomever? How, how can we assure that things, you know, go through the proper way?
I think they, um, we do have lists of some of the annual types of, types of things that come through. There are, um, some things that are new and so those are hard to circle back to say, hey, football card, we'll just use that as an example. If that's a, a reoccurring, but if there wasn't something new, we might not know to ask that question. I do, it's, it's something that we've talked about with in general communication, it's closing that loop. And I think that that's that piece. If we have that follow through once it's gone through, field trips, we use a system called FormStacker. It goes through various, um, approval stages and each step. So a teacher may fill something out. It goes to the principal administrator of that building approves that. It then automatically is forwarded on electronically to, it may be, um, something in special services. It may go to Dr. McCrystal. We'll go that and then it actually, for those, depending on, usually it's tough to determine, but if it is out of state or, um, overnight, um, then it actually has a superintendent, uh, approval on that and then it kicks back something back to that requestor. And so I think that's something that we can tighten up on those things. It's also, we have a variety of different, if this is something that we, um, expect and we normally see, if we haven't, it's okay to ask that question. Hey, the candy bars for the dance team or whatever that is, are we doing that again? And where do we go through, um, with those components? And so it is, it's something we just have to go back and, and look at, review those procedures and ensure that, that's that accountability.
Yeah. I, I mean, and not only from a liability standpoint, but from a, a cost conservation standpoint, um, I, I think it's now in front of us, it, it, it asks the question, what else is out there and, and what can we make sure isn't on an auto renewal cycle for things that we don't even use it?
And so I, I wanted to address that because I think your question was all encompassing. Your question was not only about a lot of these activity accounts.
Right.
Right? And that's where it gets a little sticky is these are fundraisers really for the activity account or general ledger we were referring to, but from a departmental to departmental basis, right? Uh, from a building to building basis, um, with the operational efficiency goal several years ago, each and every department here, we have a master list of all the contracts we have and we know when their expiration dates are. We know when their key terms are, um, so that we can monitor, um, that type of data, well, all year long, um, so that we can monitor that data so that if we do get a bill against that contract, we can look at that data and say, are we getting billed in accordance with the contract? So I, I, I very much appreciate your point because several years ago, I will be honest, I don't think, we didn't really have a, a good handle every building. At least at the macro level, we didn't have a good handle on that. Each and every cabinet member, each and every department owner, they may say, oh yeah, I got a handle on it. But, but do we really? Well, we do now and so we, we do keep track of those. It's very, when, when we're running an activity account or maybe it's the basketball program and football team and they decide to run a different fundraiser and it's during a different time of the season or year that they run that fundraiser, that's where we're, we can be in the dark, right? Um, but it's, as, as Ms. Lombard said, it's creating a process upfront that the coaches are not to move forward unless they have the proper documentation in hand. FormStack may be a solution to that. Um, and so we're, we're going to button up that process pretty tight.
We've also talked a little bit with some of those contracts, that maybe they're two or three year contract and, hey, we're going to renew that or whatever system that is. Um, when that's done, um, we're ensuring that, let that new contract, let's bring it forward to the board, even if it's not going to be a change, but the new dates and terms, I think that was, you know, holds us accountable to checking those things and ensuring. Um, we're going to do a presentation about, um, privacy and all of those things. We're looking at our apps. We're looking at our apps, we're looking at a, a lot of our platforms right now that are, are going on. And so, um, if we're doing those things on an annual basis, hopefully that'll start checking those components.
Thank you both. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, again, I'll point out, I mean, I, I, I understand the greater point being made and it's valid. But th- this stuff is completely different. I think it was referenced about the, the cost of the district. There is, the only cost of the district, these revenue contracts is, is the accounting for them. These are set aside, we're just a fiduciary acting on behalf of them. These are, these are just revenue generation fundraisers, okay? A lot different than our contracts with our vendors. Um, this is completely different. I mean, this is not a vendor contract per se. So, I, I mean, it's, there's completely, there has been completely different procedures for those types of contracts for, for quite a while. And there's, we, we generally see all these renewing contracts from our vendors several months before they renew type of thing. This, this type of stuff's a little different. Um, a little, you know, uh, just more of a accounting, um, type of thing to have to deal with and address. And, um, you know, Ms. Myrino was just making sure that, you know, we're abiding by what our policy, uh, basically says on this. And I'd agree with, it's to get buttoned up and, uh, need to be following policy. And I think the administration gets our point, correct? So.
Yes.
All right. Is there anything further concerning the revenue contracts?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just make one comment. I guess part of this is we want these to happen, right? These are fundraisers, these are good for the clubs. We want to make sure this process is easy for any coaches or any club members to do to go raise money from the community, with a good connection to the community. We want it to be a simple process, understood. But, and it hasn't been mentioned, the other thing that I think we're checking for in some ways is we're, we're approving the fundraiser as it is. So there's a little bit of a, an image thing here that we need to be cognizant of when we approve this, right? Uh, I mean, the football cards, everybody knows them. I think everybody, uh, likes them, um, for, for the most part. But, uh, there could be fundraisers that might not be the best. And by not doing this, you don't want everybody going off and doing their own and saying they have the endorsement from Huntley High School, right? We don't want that. That is, that is our brand and we don't want everybody just running along with that. So it's, uh, it's an interesting, uh, question.
Anything further, uh, from anyone?
Yeah, just, uh, two more cents, if you don't mind a moment. Um, I think this is an excellent opportunity because as an education piece for our coaches, because on the form, it, it says that the, the signed form needs to be returned to the coaches. So again, it's just to reiterate the point, if the coaches don't see the form coming back, they've also got to do their diligence to realize that this is not just an automatic thing. I submit the form, it's a one way street. It, it needs to be a, a two way street as well. Um, for any sponsor of any organization, not, not to harp on coaches. Um, also, I did have a question. Um, if these things had occurred where it didn't go through board approval or things that shown up late, um, has there been any issues from a cash management standpoint? Or any concerns in that respect where money was being taken in and was it, is it being turned in? Is, is there the accountability? And then that should raise the flag as well to say, wait, we've got money coming in from a revenue agreement, but we don't have the revenue agreement in place.
Well, that's a really good point. And that, and that would be part of the buttoning up process, right? But that, it should never get to that point, right? Buttoning it up so it doesn't get to that point, but certainly that would have, yes, in that office, that should have triggered. Ooh, yes, right? Where is that form? Uh, so yes, I agree with you, but, um, but from a cash flow perspective, you know, by its very nature, cash flow, no, it really doesn't affect cash flow, but should the cash flow have impacted or at least triggered the question, uh, about this form, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Um, with that, um, is, does anybody have any issues with approving these nine contracts that are presented and moving them forward to the board for vote?
I don't.
No.
No.
Okay. All right. We'll be moving that forward to consent, um, at our next meeting. So we're on to, uh, human resources. Ready, is that it? So, Mr. Biggs?
Uh, so this will, uh, on the human resources, Dr. Zir will, will take us through that. We will not be able to move this forward, uh, because we don't have a full committee.
If we walk on consent.
Well, you, you, yeah, it'll go to.
It'll be an agenda item.
Yep.
Agenda item, I think, yeah.
On that, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yep.
On that. So with that, Dr. Zir?
Yeah, good evening. Um, bringing, uh, to you this evening, a recommendation from the health insurance committee, which comprised of HA member, head of members and administration. And, um, we bring this every year as we get prepared for open enrollment, um, here towards the end of the month, into November, as we make plan changes for January one and, um, introduce, um, new rates that we need to do. So, um, we've got a few topics, um, that are changing, uh, this year. Uh, one of the major ones, um, as you'll see on here, there is an increase that we need to talk about and, um, kind of go over, you know, what, excuse me, what caused that significant increase, um, things within the district, things outside the district. Um, so we'll, we'll address that. Um, but the one thing I wanted to address, um, we have been with the same plan, um, as long as I've been in the seat. Uh, we've offered four plans. Historically, um, we call it plan PPO one, PPO two, uh, the HMO. And then we did add, um, a few years back, a high deductible HSA PPO plan. So, uh, what we are presenting tonight from the committee is a recommendation, uh, the first change on here, um, in a long time to the plans is to the PPO one. And we beat to a, um, plan called the Blue Choice Options, um, PPO one. Uh, but what it does is it creates tiers within the plan. So a tier one, a tier two, and then how to network, um, tier, tier three. Uh, but what it does is puts the on, on employees to, you know, choose wisely in terms of, you know, the healthcare that they're going to choose. If you're, if you choose the net tier one, um, it's going to be more affordable. Um, tier two, um, going to cost a little bit more. So, um, the different doctors in the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network, um, there's a portal to go in and search that and choose, um, you know, what that looks like for you. So that's the biggest change, uh, we're recommending, uh, to the plan. Um, like I said, we haven't had many changes to these plans. We feel the plans are very robust. Um, they provide great healthcare, um, to our employees, um, provide some different options to choose from in terms of, you know, that premium, uh, that they would pay semi monthly. And I've attached those rate sheets, um, so you can take a look at that. So that's the major change we're looking at, uh, with the plans. Our dental plan will remain the same. It'll be our second year with, um, MetLife. And, um, we're also going to continue on, um, with DFP Vision. And we did have some, um, other quotes that came back, but we've had a real good experience with DFP and it definitely wasn't worth the switch. And then we're also still running our long term disability and our life insurance to maintain at this time. I have the comparable rate sheets there. So let me explain the rate sheets just a little bit. Um, these rate sheets are what the employees see during open enrollment. So when we hold the committee meetings, this is kind of what they want to see because, uh, we can pay twice a month. They want to see what the cost is, uh, per pay. So that first rate sheet there is from twenty twenty-three and those are the twenty-four pay folks. So people are going to be paid year round. And then the second rate sheet for twenty twenty-four, um, that's what we're looking at in terms of, um, the new rates that we come across with the increases. And then there's a couple of rate sheets on there entitled seventeen pay. Those are the folks that are, um, hourly and choosing to be paid, um, seventeen times a year. And then you also have, um, some dual rate sheets. And that's important to note in the HA contract, um, folks that are married in the district, um, receive different rates. Uh, so there's some calculation, uh, to create those rate sheets at the end of the day. And then we've got seventeen, eighteen couples in the district, uh, that benefit from those rates. So if there's not any questions or just questions about the plans, I'll take those now. And then we'll talk about, um, the increase that we're seeing that's significant compared to years past.
Last one question about your plans. So we're doing MetLife Dental. Um, I believe Blue Cross Blue Shield offers dental. I don't want to make any judgments on that. But, uh, is that something we've looked at? Because sometimes you get a rate, rate deduction if you bundle a plan, if you will.
We did. That was one of, um, the folks that came back. Um, we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, a couple of years ago. And, and I'm not going to get up and talk negative about any company and, and what they provide. We didn't have the best experience, um, with Blue Cross Blue Shield when we were with them for dental. Hopefully that's, um, gotten better. But, um, our, our insurance brokers here, um, Wendy Williams, Wendy, I don't know if you want to speak to that renewal process when we looked at the dental. But, um, we didn't look at it this year because we were in guaranteed rates with MetLife for the second year.
Okay.
Yeah. So we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield before MetLife. We've hopped around on dental. Why? Lombard's going to nod her head and agree on that. Um, but, um, we, we, we've hopped around on them, you know, quite a bit. And, you know, sometimes we have to look at the disruption on that, um, especially at our major dental providers, um, that are in this area. Um, a lot of times though, when we call those folks up, they'll take that insurance on. And that's probably been my experience, um, personal experience, um, that they'll switch over and take that on. But, um, changing the dental, um, there's disruption and our experience so far with MetLife has been really good. Um, but that will be out for bid next year, for twenty twenty-five. So it's, it's year two out of three, but there's a cap on that, what they can increase it. So we can still go out to bid on it, right, Wendy?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they don't have a set rate for year three for us. Good question.
Uh, Dr. Zir, have, have you looked into, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield's wellness incentive program for employees? Yeah?
Uh, yeah, we, we, we have that available, right, Wendy? So the wellness program is there. Um, it's out on, you know, the site and everything. They do some information on that. So, yeah.
That's good. I don't work for them. I'm just familiar with.
Yeah, absolutely. So we can move on to the increase. Um, that increase is a, it's an eye popping number, um, at eighteen point one percent. And, um, something we have experienced over the last few years. Um, I pulled some numbers over the last few years. I went back to two thousand nineteen. Uh, we experienced a four point three percent increase that year. Twenty twenty, um, the HMO experienced an eight point four. Our other plans were seven point eight nine. Twenty twenty-one was a six percent increase. Twenty twenty-two, um, was a point four percent increase. And that was the COVID effect. Um, and then last year we had a five point eight and we're looking at eighteen point one this year. And there's some things in the industry, um, that are driving that. Um, and I'm the last person that, you know, wants to bring this up, but there's still COVID hangover effect, um, that's coming, um, with, you know, things that were deferred during the pandemic, um, underutilization of care, you know, people that weren't getting to, um, you know, whether it was annual checkups, things of that nature, and that's kind of piling up now. Um, and as we know, there is a mental health crisis, um, that's going on. Uh, so we've seen obviously the insurance companies have to take that on along with an increase in, um, substance abuse. So I, I'm not going to go over, you know, every single thing in the industry that we've had. And during our meeting, you know, our broker, you know, highlights some of these things. Um, when you look at, you know, the drug spend, um, that's increasing as they put new drugs out onto the market. Um, different specialty drugs that come out, that has not gotten cheaper, um, over the years. Um, rise in high cost claims, and I know Mr. Altmeier, um, addresses that every month, um, with the high cost claims that we have. And, um, you know, we've seen that, um, across the industry in general. And then inflation. And we're not sure if this is completely reacted to, um, inflation over the last couple of years. Overseeing inflation, um, play a role also, um, in the increase. Um, overall cost per hospital, you know, the things we see here in terms of, you know, like trying to hire nurses. You have the traveling nurse world out there, um, where nurses can make, you know, significant money per hour. Um, we've talked to Northwestern, they, they're experiencing that too, um, where, you know, they're having to contract some new services to the outside. So, uh, just an example to connect, you know, our world, that medical world where, you know, sometimes it's hard to fill, you know, certain areas. And, um, hospitals are having to pay for that and are passing the, passing the buck along, um, if you will, through the health insurance line. I also want to note.
Right.
Um, surrounding districts are seeing the same thing. So, uh, we ran some, you know, just some quick numbers. Um, a large unit district to the south, um, and Mr. Bettin, you know, has noted, um, is communicating with you on this. Um, and an eighteen percent increase, you know, a district, um, type of district to our east, um, very similar. And then I know Mr. Altmeier pulled some numbers on some forty some districts that are in a co-op. And, um, they had a wide range too. Um, I think the average overall was around fifteen percent, if I recall correctly. And, um, and depending on the size of your district and your experience, also experiencing, you know, what we're experiencing here at eighteen percent.
Yeah. And I think, I think what's important to also note is, right, we're a self insured district. And I think last year is, is a good indicator, right? When the actuaries look and they're estimating, what do they think next year's spend is going to look like? Well, they look back twenty-four months, right? The last year's spend alone, well, that was a thirty, almost a thirty-one percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. And we went from ten million to fifteen point two nine million, right? And we did that because, well, we had a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of sick people, a lot of large claimants. And so when they're estimating those numbers, it's not just a one year look back, it is a two year look back. And it's based on the experience, it's based on inflation, it's based on the COVID hangover, it's based on, well, it's based on everything. But it's primarily based on the people in our plan and the symptoms that they have. And the RX and the prescription dogs that they're currently on that they know they're going to continue, right? There's certain things that just continue unfortunately. And so from an actuary standpoint, that's how they determine that. Um, and I know there's concern like eighteen percent sounds high, but when you're self insured, well, most other districts, almost every other district around here has had the same type of year we had last year. Maybe not to the tune of thirty percent, but pretty high. So Mr. Zir mentioned a co-op. Well, there are co-ops out there and that's, that's an option for us to look into. We can, we can enter into a self insured co-op where we share kind of the responsibility all with each other. And we share the cost with each other. And we kind of flatline out our exposure a little bit because we're all kind of helping each other. So even though we have a high claim year, we don't necessarily have to pay for one hundred percent of those high claimant costs. So NIHIP is a co-op managed by Gallagher and it's about thirty-five school districts. And NIHIP stands for Northern Illinois Health Insurance Plan. And there's about thirty-five districts on the plan. From Stevenson to, uh, to Barrington, to CUSD two hundred, to Fox Lake, to Geneva, uh, to Johnsburg, to McHenry one fifty-six, McHenry fifteen. There's a lot of big districts on this as well. And the average for all of those districts for premium increase is fifteen point five percent. And so I have a list and I can't really, I shouldn't probably share each one independently. But here are some of the percentages of those districts, uh, twenty point five percent. If, if they were to go alone, right, their portion of this average, you know, one district did twenty five, twenty point five percent, seventeen point five percent, fourteen point five percent, seventeen point five percent, twenty three point five percent, sixteen point five, eighteen point five. There's one that's actually twelve point five, probably the lowest, the lowest in the group. So eighteen point one, knowing the claimants that we had in the pipeline last year and the experience that we had last year, just last year alone, eighteen point one percent, right? This, this isn't a negotiated premium. This is what do they feel, we, where are we going to end up? And they do that so that we can, well, build a premium to our employees so that we are, we are billing our approach, uh, employees appropriately, right? We have a very beneficial plan to our employees with, with ninety-five percent of the second rate, second highest plan for a single and seventy-five percent of the second highest plan for our employee plus one and family. And that's the board contribution. And that's how we calculate the contributions that you're seeing. So it's in our interest to make sure that we do use an actuary so that we can get these numbers as close as we can to what they think they should be. So that while we don't unfortunately get stuck carrying the bag, we're all in this together. We need our employees to be healthy and we need them to be part of the solution to being healthy. The wellness plan is a perfect example, right? We need to offer things to let them take control of their wellness, right? Uh, that's why we do the wellness screenings, right? Because we want our employees to do a wellness screening. We want them to get the blood work. We want them to see their doctor so that they can be healthy and they'll help the plan, but they also help our students.
Yeah.
Right? Because we need them in the classroom. So I hope that provides a little background, a little comfort that we're not in this alone. This is statewide, this is every district we know, that I know of, is going through very similar, uh, things right now with health, health insurance. Thank you.
All right, I guess I'll jump in. Um, the, the first comment is, so this doesn't affect me. All right, I guess I'll jump in. The first comment is, so this doesn't affect me. I don't, I'm not an employee of the district. Where you're asking us to go ahead and provide an eighteen percent increase to employees here. And so emotionally, my response is, I don't think a lot of people are going to be very happy with that. And so I'm, I'm going to ask these questions and if the actuaries say this is what it is, I mean, we, we are, we're a rat. But one of the things that concerns me about this is, everything you mentioned was school districts, right? So one of the things as, as I ran for, as, on the school board is, some of this needs to be looked at differently. Why do all school districts have a double digit increase in health insurance, knowing that it's publicly funded? Why did they all get this when there's, when it's actually hard to argue? And Illinois really only had one choice for health insurance and that's Blue Cross Blue Shield. There are other options, but most people really like Blue Cross Blue Shield. So there are other options you can go to on that. But then when you look at the CPI that was released today, and they, they track medical costs year over year, they decline two point six percent. That's a real number. That's a general number. It's, this is how they measure it. And then when you look at the people who are measuring the Affordable Care Act plans, the health marketplace, the average or the median increase is six percent. This is in my terms, the highest risk pool because anybody can join and you're guaranteed to get a spot. So it's six percent. When, and the data that I pulled out, that's out there on the web, said Blue Cross Blue Shield Illinois, Affordable Care Act, had a four point eight percent increase. So I'm just, I'm throwing these numbers out there because we have to figure out a way to challenge. We can't. Eighteen percent is not something that is a good idea. And I know you want to kind of jump in here.
Mark, you have a lot of questions and a lot of statements, so.
I, I do, and I'm not probably going to go through these. I'll just look for an answer on that and, and, and people look at. I'm just trying to make the point that eighteen percent is high and it's hitting every public district. The businesses I talk to aren't seeing these. Is it higher risk in the school district? Is the risk pool different? So the one thing that most people seem to come up with is around the self funding of where they're. And again, I've not worked for a self funding company. I know people who have and many of them are backing out of it. Because the incentive is not there for the healthcare companies to really bring the cost down. Because they know you're going to pay the bill. So one of the things I would suggest we look at is what does it look like if we don't self fund? Where the insurance company is taking the risk. And when we say that the plan's exposed, we should look at comparable plans that are out there on the healthcare marketplace. This is one of the advantages of the Affordable Care Act. These prices are out there. I looked at yesterday. And you can do a side by side comparison of our plan. And I'm not suggesting we should go with the Affordable Care Act healthcare plan. I'm not suggesting that. But it is real pricing data that we can use to talk through. We have to look at this. And I, I, again, I'm just looking around the room and every one of you almost in here pays this healthcare insurance. Eighteen percent is a big jump and a lot of these others were pretty big jumps too. So I'm just putting it out there. We have to challenge it. These are the discussions and I think they're the discussions that are going to happen at home when they see these rates. So I, I, you can answer that. There's a whole bunch of other questions to ask.
Yeah, let me, let me, if I can start, right? I think, Mr. Bettin, your very first statement was that our employees are going to see an eighteen point six percent increase. They're not. They're not because, because while we provide, right, ninety five percent of the single rate to the employee. So the rate's going up by eighteen percent, well, the school district for the single employee in a given plan is paying ninety five percent of that increase. And in addition, for seventy five percent for an employee plus one and a seventy five percent for a family. So our employees not, are not necessarily going to see those types of increases. In fact.
Some are going down.
Some are going down. So we have, we, we added a plan to save over, well, over three hundred thousand dollars to the district that Mr. Zaire talked about by going to the BCO PPO plan, which replaced the PPO, PPO one plan. And that plan is actually going down seventeen percent on the family side. It's going down twenty four percent to the employee on the single side. On the PPO two side, yes, that plan is going up fourteen percent and one point three percent on the family side.
Does that imply if we're paying more, if we're paying more than ninety five percent, we're going up on the percentage we're paying?
No, we're paying ninety, no, it's part of the contract, it's part of the contract. We pay ninety five percent of the second highest plan for a single employee. And then we have employee plus one and we have the family. Okay? So we are contractually obligated to board, the school district is contractually obligated on the health insurance side as to how much of the premium that we cover. So when Mr. Zaire and we explain that unfortunately costs are going up, when premiums go up eighteen point one percent, we are absorbing, the district is absorbing the majority of that eighteen percent because we're paying the first seventy five percent of it. We're paying the first ninety five percent of it for a single employee. So employees are actually, they have very good options this year in front of us. It's the school district that is unfortunately going to yield the majority of the cost related to that increase. Our HMO folks, because of the, the mix and our experience within that plan, saw the highest increase. So we do have family employees who choose HMO. They don't have to choose HMO. But they will see a family rate go up by eighteen, twenty two percent. And on the single side, their rate last year was twenty one dollars, well, every pay period. And it's going up to thirty nine dollars. So it's still not, I mean, it's twenty one to thirty nine. And because the numbers are so small, it's still an eighty four percent increase. So if you're single and you want to be on HMO, that is an eighty four percent increase. But that is what the actuary in Blue Cross Blue Shield had to do based on the experience of each and every one of these plans. Based on right sizing the premiums, based on the cost within those plans. So I wanted to first address that because our employees are not, they have options. And some of these options are very, very good for the employees. I think actually some of them are going to be pretty happy with this.
That's, that's.
It's just not good for the rest, but it's not good for the district because it's the district that is, that is going to yield the majority of that eighteen point two percent increase. Which we, we understand that's, that's part of the contract. That's why we, you know, we do what we do. And that, that may be a difference between, you know, I've been corporate America a long time. And school districts by their very nature, sometimes we have to provide benefits to some of our employees that are over and above what they are in corporate America because we need to attract teachers. We need to attract employees. And historically, districts, school districts have done it through benefits. So we typically have better insurance premium for our employees than corporate America does.
There's clearly something I missed on this and I apologize for that. I'm still confused on why if the overall plan goes up by eighteen percent and we're still paying ninety five percent or eighty six percent or seventy eight percent of it, the employee plan wouldn't go up by the same eighteen percent.
Yes, cool.
I'm trying to figure out.
And you did have a plan change here and there and, and the actuary has to right size each plan based on the experience of each plan. As well, that, so that comes into play into the mix here.
Right, you're just, you're messing with many years of algebra that doesn't match.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. So, so that's really, I think, the only thing I, I really wanted to address. I mean, you had a lot of other comments there about ACA and CPI and things of that nature. And I understand that the Affordable Healthcare Act is for people that don't have access to insurance. They have access here. We can't just have people go to the Affordable Care Act insurance and they call it affordable because they try to make it affordable. Because they don't, they don't have prior risk.
I'm merely using it as a context where we can check prices.
But, right, but we're trying to compare our rate to an Affordable Care Act price that is priced low because it's priced low for people that don't have access to insurance. That's all I'm, I just wanted to make that point just in case.
And what I looked up was an unsubsidized plan.
Okay.
So it was not subsidized. It was not affordable anyways.
But I do, but I do think your point of making sure that we are crossing our Ts and dying our Us, right? For the district and for our employees is well taken, right? And we've, we've done that. And in fact, we've done that with Alliant this past year with their experience. And we've looked in prior years at looking at other providers because there are other providers in Blue Cross Blue Shield, right? There, there certainly are. But when we compare those prices and what Blue Cross Blue Shield is doing for us today from an aggregate stop loss, from a stop loss standpoint, and from a prime therapeutic standpoint, that's the RX side of the business, nobody can compete. And I think, I think Wendy from Alliant would validate that. You know, on the stop loss side, they did want to bring this up. Part of the reason, you know, we, we went up eighteen point one percent is our stop loss insurance, well, that actually only went up sixteen point one percent. One point five million, from one point three to one point five million. But stop loss, we have insurance on any claim that goes over a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Blue Cross steps in and pays for that claim. Last year, Blue Cross Blue Shield reimbursed the district three point, almost three point six million dollars. They picked up three point six million dollars of claims and our premium on the stop loss side is only one point five. They're losing money. Over the last two years, they've reimbursed us more than the premium cost.
Don't be telling them that, Mark.
Pardon? I know.
Not too loud.
But, but it's those things where it's really hard to compete when we go out to the outside market because they see our large claims and they go, wow, three point five million, huh? Or your premium, your stop loss premium is starting at three point five million with some of these companies. So that's good and bad, but that's, we have, we have, we have looked outside and we'll, we'll continue to do so. I appreciate you pushing on these types of things because pushing on these types of things, that helps us all get better. So.
So Mark, can I, can I ask you a question here?
I just wanted to provide a little background. Yeah, Tony?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, it, I think, you know, I'm not focused on eighteen percent and, you know, I focus a little bit more on the raw dollars that people are going to be incurring and how reasonable that is. But secondarily, I mean, just the fundamentals of how the self insured works. Each, you know, we're Blue Cross Blue Shield, they've got these negotiated rates with the providers, okay? And that's what these plans each represent, okay? So, I mean, it's dictated by contracts that they have with all the doctors and other medical providers. I mean, so my question is, I mean, these are, these are the Blue Cross Blue Shield kind of standard plans for whatever we've got, the four categories. Is there any kind of, because of our size and volume and your number of, do we get any kind of discount off of what, you know, I'd say a smaller group would get? I guess that's more of a question for Wendy. Is, is how, how, you know, the negotiated rates are negotiated rates that Blue Cross Blue Shield has. How do we benefit from our size as far as this, getting further discounts related to that? So they're going to pay out the claims based on the claim. That's, that's the part we can't control. We're a self insured, claim gets paid regardless, based on whatever the rules are for that specific plan. But how do we get discounted in some respect related to our size?
Thank you, Tony. I'm, I'm going to have Wendy, actually Wendy stepped up to the left turn. So I'm going to have her introduce herself and she can answer your question.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Wendy Williams from Alliant. And let me see if I can tackle that question. One of the differences that you guys have the ability to do when you are self funded is to take advantage of actually participating in your own claim experience. So you're getting the benefit of not paying what they call, if the insurance company takes on the risk, then therefore it's called a fully insured contract. In that contract, because they're taking on the risk, they also charge a risk profit. And a lot of smaller employers, generally because of cash flow issues and lack of risk tolerance, things like that, they don't want to be self funded. So they go into a fully insured contract. In addition to that, if, if something costs them, a smaller company, five hundred thousand dollars to insure their, you know, a hundred people, thirty six people, whatever the magic number is, you are, in a fully insured contract, you also have to pay state premium taxes on the entire premium. So there's another component that you guys only pay state premium tax on the cost of the insurance, on the stop loss portion, which is less than your claims because your claims make up, you know, eighty five percent of the total cost roughly. So those types of things give you that scale in order to, you know, participate in your, in paying your own claims. Now in those, in the co-op for instance, you have, you know, everybody's getting an average of fifteen and a half or some are getting more, some are getting a little less based on their own utilization because that's why it's, it's looking different. So in general, the pool is, is taking care of each other. And if you were in a pool, you would end up paying for someone else's, another district's claims in a year that you might've had fabulous claims. So in some instances, being independent on your own is helping you. Because as Adam had mentioned, there were plenty of years where we had low increases. We were able to keep the, what we call fully insured premium equivalents or copper equivalents pretty neutral. And of course, the employee contribution's pretty stable and neutral. And your enrollment has stayed pretty neutral. So you're, you've been able to take advantage of that. And so in some years, you have some spikes. But I think, you know, going back to trying to get back to the core of the question, how do you take advantage of, you know, some of that scale? Because of your size. Blue Cross has basically an encapsulated program. They offer the administrative services, the access to the hospital discount. They provide the stop loss insurance. They provide all wellness, you know, all those types of programs. And you guys instituted or implemented some condition management programs last year for diabetes, hypertension, orthopedic, you know, care and so forth. So those were identified as, you know, higher cost claims that we need to address. You've done some of the right things in addition to, you know, the wellness biometric screenings and so forth. There's, there's no other discount other than pure negotiation. And I'll go back to maybe something you, you've said. If, if the, if the districts look very similar, they're very homogenous, they look the same, and you guys are self funding, what does Blue Cross, and I, and I don't always often protect them, what do they, what do they do? What incentive do they have to provide, you know, lower costs to you? Because, but you are paying the claims. I mean, you are paying their, so they're not, they, they don't have the, always have the ability to tack on extra fees because you've got your claims cost. They've got their, you know, administrative costs. Now that's where they're making some money. But it's, it's a, it's like two percent, you know, in general of your overall spend. It's not very much. It's not big dollars. Where I think sometimes they will refine, if there's an opportunity, is in the pharmacy. And it's been coming on as of late over the last several years, it's growing and growing and growing. Where because they control it, they control the pharmacy benefit management company, they own it, the distribution of specialty drugs and so forth, and they control the rebates. So they give you a dollar figure. And, I mean, I would love for all, we can talk about insurance all day long. I love, it's my specialty, it's what I focus on. So I do like talking about it and like to educate people on, you know, why it is, what it, you know, what it becomes. But the specialty drug, you know, market is, is climbing and they control some of those, those fees and those contracts. So they can, they can add some revenue for themselves in that contract. And you have no choice because it is all encompassing in your contract. There are other ways in which to carve out some things. But in your case, because we have split enrollment between an HMO plan and your PPO plan, I can't, at your size, it's not, you're not big enough to carve out the stop loss. You're not big enough to carve out your pharmacy as I, I have in other districts. So, but we could change some things that maybe make that an attractive proposition. We did go out to market this year on stop loss as well. Because even though I can't carve it out, I use it as leverage. If I can get a good quote somewhere and say, now, Blue Cross knows they, they won't let me carve it out at your size. But I still say, but this is probably the targeted price that it ought to be. So get me closer. It uses a bargaining or negotiating, you know, strategy. I had, I think we went to like between twelve and fifteen stop loss markets. All but two declined quote because of your claims. They don't, our market, our stop loss market is getting harder. We're getting less and less access to capacity. They're, they're not willing to quote as often as they would or being as, you know, open to, you know, taking on risk as they were. You guys have, over the past four years, you've had paid three point eight, well, three point three million in individual stop loss premium. And in those same four years, they've paid out six. And in those same four years, they've paid out six point two million. So that's over and above, so you guys are paying all of your claims under two hundred thousand per person and they're picking up the extra, you know, what's over and above two hundred thousand. So in that pool, they're losing money. But again, it's part of, you know, the whole product, what they're willing to do and negotiate. And that's our job is to look out for you. And, you know, every component that we can do. We increased the pharmacy rebate this year for you. We negotiated it. It's kind of a double edged sword. That's great, right? Because it gives you rebate money back on those specialty drugs. However, what that tells you is that more specialty drugs are being utilized. So therefore, there's more rebate dollars to be had to funnel into your pocket. But I want to make sure it gets into your, you know, plan sponsor pocket rather than staying within Blue Cross for their pocket. So that is our job to do. I probably over answered, maybe not answered, but went over and above. And, you know, this year, so typically you guys, over the few years, last few years, you've had like an average of five, what we call catch drop claimants, over and above the stop loss limit of two hundred thousand. And in twenty twenty-two, you had eight. So three more people is a lot in that category. Specialty drugs then, higher, more people with larger claims than you've ever had in the past. And that's why we've got a little bit of a wall up to deal with. And it's probably, I'm hoping, you know, again, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm hoping that there's, you know, some end inside. But I fear that it's going to go a little higher before it gets better. But it is, you know, kind of cyclical, you know, with some of your folks. But you do have people on, you know, with conditions that are tougher and they will be on the plan. You know, they happen for many years and they probably will be. Any other questions that I can maybe answer? We can talk about some other things too.
I'll jump in with just one and maybe you were prepared to this one a little bit. So when I think of what we do here because we are self-insured, how much is the claims side of ours increasing? So how much is the self-insured, what we're paying out in claims going up? And then compare that to how much is the access to the administration that we're providing for Blue Cross Blue Shield and to be in the network with their rates increasing?
Yeah. So administrative costs, they're going up five point five percent. That includes, you know, Blue Cross's administration fee, which is inclusive of, you know, them paying the claims, having negotiated those PPO contracts with providers, you know, physicians and hospitals and so forth. And then, of course, you have, in addition to that, you have the HMO physician service fees, what we call capitation fees. So basically, they pay a doctor a fee every month for people that are enrolled in the plan and they call enrolled on their roster, their patient list, whether they see them or not. Most people get, you know, do go see their doctor for various reasons, you know, every month or maybe not, maybe once or twice a year, but they're getting a fee. So overall, that's meant to take care of their care. And then the HMO managed care fee is also included in that. So again, I said it's five point five percent. Your stop loss is going up sixteen point one percent. Your HMO specifically was going up like seventeen point four. The HMO aggregate stop loss was going up thirty-five point five. PPO mixed with the high deductible health plan, which is still a PPO provider network contract. The individual stop loss is going up sixteen percent, sixty point oh. And then the aggregate was only going up three point three. So we go back to, why is the HMO rate going up higher? Because again, that's where some of the claims are. And then, of course, some of the, the claims are coming from, you know, some of the HMO people. And then also, you know, it's just where the enrollment is and so forth.
And forgive me. I might have missed one.
No, I haven't gotten it.
But most of the numbers you listed were all under eighteen percent.
Well, I haven't gotten to the big one yet. Yeah, expected claims cost, your total, this is expected claims cost, twenty-two point three percent. So that's your big number, about almost two and a half million dollars. That's just a claim. So, and they're bigger dollars than.
These are weighted numbers, right? So it's not that it's equally spread across. It depends on who is in what bucket. And then depending on the volume of people in that particular bucket, it's going to skew those numbers as an entire package.
Yeah, and they rebalanced it last year. And then, of course, that is looking at it this year. And we had to do a little bit of a, sort of a rebalance this year because we're changing, we're recommending a change to the plan. But they also don't know yet how many people would enroll in that plan. Do they like it? Do they not? Are they going to migrate all the way to the HMO? Are they going to migrate to the high deductible? So it's kind of a rolling, you know, prediction as well. So they'll, a lot of times what happens is Blue Cross will look back. They can't, they can't, they do tell you what your budget should be looking forward because that's what the number is. They're going to say, based on claims, based on your demographics, your risk, utilization, what's happened in the past and what's potentially emerging as a potential claimant, what's going to happen in the future. That's what they set your budget. They're telling you what to set because you're mainly paying for your claims. They're taking on some risk for the high dollars so that it doesn't, you know, bankrupt you in a sense. And then, of course, they just pay for, you know, they're going to charge you for their administrative costs. So it's looking back at things. They're not, they're not great like we had this past year in twenty twenty-two. They gave you a budget number. Here's what your expected claim ought to be, and they blew it. You exceeded it by a lot. So you can never tell for certain what's going to happen to someone. And what's happened also, you know, timing of negotiation of contracts, providers and hospitals. You know, during COVID, I think they probably, you know, at the beginning of COVID, if some were up for renegotiation, they stopped it. So then, of course, fast forward twenty-two and twenty-three, you know, even in twenty-one, but twenty-two and twenty-three, all of those contracts, sometimes they're mostly three years long. So depending upon where they were in their negotiation. And if this hospital system renews them and this one is another year later, it's staggered. So there are, you know, those costs as well. There's a lot. And comparing to the marketplace, you could look at some plans. I mean, I did this for another district just recently. We looked at the metallic level plan, you know, names. So platinum, gold, silver, bronze. And they're based on an actuarial value compared to what percentage of claims they are intended to pay for. And so bronze is obviously the least rich and the least expensive. We looked at the best HMO bronze plan available to see if we could mimic or model something as an added plan to bring down costs. And the deductible was seven thousand dollars on an HMO plan. The out of pocket for a single person was fourteen something. And then, of course, it had some co-pays of like fifty-five dollars for a general practitioner, up to like one twenty-five, I think, for a specialty, you know, practitioner. It was high, you know? So when you look at what your plan is, and it hasn't changed in years, minimal changes. HMO hasn't changed, you know, other than the network, which we took advantage of. Most everybody out in your area, they were using what they call Blue Vantage HMO doctors. But you were paying, you know, for HMLOI doctors, their contract fees. And everybody was, they had mutual exposure, like, like same, two contracts, same doctor. But if you're enrolled under HMLOI, you know, you're going to pay a higher rate. Seeing the same doctor for the same thing, didn't make any sense. So we took advantage of that. And then we added, in two thousand seventeen, we added the high deductible, just HSA plan. But in general, your plans haven't changed and they're very, very rich. We provided some benchmarking that also, you know, shows you not only with, based on your industry, what others are, you know, others' plans are, what their contributions are, what their total premiums are. We look at size and we look at, you know, geographic region as well. So you're welcome to have, you know, any and all of that data that you want to help, you know, kind of put some of this into perspective. And, you know, I don't know if I, I don't want to keep going because I could talk, I could talk for days. I'm so sorry. But what I want you to know is I've got your back. We do everything in our power to negotiate and to look at things to make sure that you guys are able to afford it. You know, retain the right people that you need, attract the, you know, new people that you haven't gotten yet. You know, and obviously balance that with, you know, salary and income and so forth. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, and that is our role. And I appreciate any challenge you want to throw our way. If you do hear something interesting, pass it our way. We'll look into it, we'll investigate if we haven't already done so. You know, or we can tell you why we wouldn't bring it to the table, why it's not a good, a good idea. You know, why it doesn't fit for you. There's lots of things to always talk about. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Click the button off.
Any other discussion?
No, at your place, I just put, you know, what the, what the plans are. And that's called our adagran that goes out at open enrollment. So just to give an idea of what those different plans are and what they provide. If I'll look through that, if that's your.
With that, I will move to number eight. Do you want to take this?
Andrew, eight thousand one, the light steering committee update. This is Jill.
We're going to Dr. Zier drive the bus while I, it's a just report on our update. So, well, Wendy can talk insurance all day. I can talk secondary transition services for students in special education. So if you want to meet, talk to me, we can exchange stories, really. Yeah, so I actually appreciate the passion that anyone has about their field. And so, you know, while Dr. Zier is pulling this up, really, my report today, I provided a memo, but wanted to provide some just additional context to our updates for, from the light steering committee. And then also, you know, I'll begin with gratitude, which is what I do most of the time in special education and in my personal life. So as we start to present these updates, I do want to share that, you know, I come to the table with updates that are really impacted by families, staff, community members for my entire career that have led me to this place where I get to speak on behalf of, you know, the special education department. There's a lot of gratitude I have for all of those folks who have shaped the work we're doing. So I just want to at least acknowledge that because I have the mic and we're not quite ready to present. No, you have no permission? Just name on paper. I could just start, that's fine. So purpose, purpose of tonight is just really to provide the updates where, what the light steering committee has been working on. I'm going to start by giving a little bit of background on special education transition planning. There's a lot we do in special education, but there's a very specific area in special education called post-secondary planning. I want to provide a little bit of context around that. I'll talk very briefly about the history of the light program in our district and really specifically about the light program locations that have been discussed and an update around that. And then just asking the workforce, next steps in our consideration. So just some background about special education post-secondary transition planning. Students who are eligible for special education services require us to provide a coordinated set of services, including courses study and other types of services to allow us to, thus provide services to achieve successful and meaningful lives beyond high school. When we talk about post-secondary education planning, we're talking about life after high school. We get the wonderful advantage of working with our students until they are twenty-two or in the school year in which they turn twenty-two here in the state of Illinois. And after that, we are hoping that we have successfully provided them the opportunity to live a long, meaningful, independent life. And because that happens well beyond this educational school year, we have to provide services and planning around that. So in special education, those post-secondary services and that post-secondary planning is a really important part of what we do for eligible students with IDP. Our work is governed by, at the federal level, the IDEA, which is our Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. At the state level, we're governed by the Illinois State Board of Education and globally by our local education agency, our school board. We are guided in practice by, of course, those entities. In addition to that, and specific to our transition services, we're guided by our National Technical Systems Center on Transition at the federal level. At the state level, we are guided by the practices that IFB provides. And in particular, we are spending a lot of effort with, in partnership with the Illinois Center for Transition and Work at the state level. And then we are also guided here, the LEA, our school board, you know, light steering committee at a local level. So specific to transition, those are the places where we're governed, governed and guided. So some important differences, in my next slide, sorry. So some important differences that are, I think, just key. When we're talking about federal mandates, the federal law requires us to begin post-secondary planning at the age of sixteen. In the state of Illinois, that process happens in the year in which the student turns fourteen and a half. We know that we're really doing some of that planning very early and especially in a unit district like ours where we're really thinking about life after high school at the beginning of those educational years. So federal mandate provides that we, mandate that we provide services through the age of twenty-one, meaning the day before a student turns twenty-two, that's what we're required to provide. And in our state, we are providing those services to those students through the school year in which they turn twenty-two. And that's a recent change in the state of Illinois. We used to be a line of the federal, but we moved to the school year in which students turn twenty-two. Regardless of federal or state mandates, we are required to provide post-secondary planning and services to support outcomes in these key areas of employment, education, training, and independent living. Okay. So part of how that impacts us here in our district, in twenty thirteen, we launched our light instruction guiding Huntley transition program, supporting those students who completed their high school graduation requirements but continue to need those transition services for their post-secondary outcomes. Our current enrollment, our light program, is sixty students. The location of the light program, which has been certainly a focus of mine in these last couple of months, has changed throughout the years. We've been located at St. Deacon Park, we've been located at the high school, we're currently located at the Marlowe Middle School. We have a wonderful and diverse group of folks on our light steering committee who are actively working on a lot of things. But in particular, we're working on securing a permanent location for the light program and ensuring that program development is also supporting the work and that it is anchored in the research-based practices. What we, I'm going to try and, yeah, skip the whole line. Or maybe I just, wait, well, that's perfect. Okay, so anyway, I'm, three times a year, or three times this has started this year, we've met as a light steering committee to review and revise plan recommendations. So, yeah, we can go to the next slide there. So previous considerations that have been brought to the board are the six listed here. We've considered standalone buildings, buying a building, providing an addition, renovation, other additions to the administration building or the Huntley High School. All of those additions and costs were in the multi-million dollars. The low end being around two million and the high end being around eight point two million. And so when we started to meet this school year and really focused on what is next, what are the recommendations, what do we need to be doing around the permanent location, there were some key factors in consideration of that program location. And so these factors are the delivery of those transition services, predictors of positive post-school outcomes. are the delivery of those transition services, predictors of positive post-school outcome, growth and sustainability, person-centered planning, and physical responsibility, in other words, when we're making the decision around where this program or these services are delivered, we want to make sure that it offers us the opportunity to deliver on all of those, deliver the services, allow for positive outcomes, allow for growth and sustainability, be person-centered, and be physically responsible. So, full visuals are really helpful, this is sort of how I see and explain transition services, um, when we're looking at the delivery of transition services, there are some really key structures, one of those that we'll spend a minute more on after this slide is our model, uh, the model of transition services is the design, the, what is it meant to accomplish? So, when we look at the model of our transition program, what is it designed to accomplish? The people, like, who is delivering the service, who is receiving the service, who's supporting our program, and then our plan, so what are the things that we're doing to keep our program moving and growing in the right direction? Those are supported by our belief, values, and practices in transition and the partnerships that we certainly need and have. The research around transition services and delivering transition services to students who are eligible tells us that all of the work we do, so our programming must be student-focused, it must include family engagement, there must be program structures, inter-agency collaboration, and student development, so those, those five areas are all embedded in these, these structures, um, collectively. With respect to our actual structure, where do we deliver these, you know, this model, um, I'm going to shift to, to that focus specifically around, and what we've traditionally done in transition and for delivering services, so, um, there, there hasn't been a lot of change until the last decade in the delivery of transition services, student expectations, um, opportunities for work, opportunities for meaningful participation and inclusion has really shifted in a positive direction for students in special education, but when we think about traditional transition, pro, traditional transition programs, where a lot of districts still live and operate is delivering services in a first, then model, first we have students attend high school, then we have students attend transition programming. Um, now, we're in both places, thinking about and delivering transition services, but there's a, um, a change in service from, you know, the, a change in teams and a change in, um, maybe approaches from high school to then, um, uh, our transition program. Traditionally speaking, there's a lot of pull-out services, so, um, and there are a lot of job sites for our students in special education that have stayed the same, so it's often that we always use the, you know, the, the coffee shop, and we always use the grocery store, and we always use a, a pretty, um, standard set of job sites where there is value and it does not always speak to the individuality and the value add that our students, um, can offer in, in a more diversified job site, so in a traditional model, we stay pretty stagnant, we have a pretty traditional course of study, we have our teachers teaching a pretty traditional, um, set of courses, a lot, or often, teachers will lead IEDs, um, and there's not a lot of co-planning opportunities, and many times, our students are in self-contained settings throughout the day, which means that their, um, exposure and experience in the general education setting, in the community, is just limited. So, um, as we think about our program here, we really are wanting to move to a more person-centered program, a, a program that would allow us to provide a more all-in, shared vision, shared mission, shared resources model, where our related service providers and our job coaches, our parent professionals are embedded in and, and actively part of our community experiences, job coaching, um, community-based experiences, data, all of those, uh, things are collectively sharing, um, responsibility and, um, and, and goal-setting with our students. Um, we look at redesigning our courses study, really making sure we're intentional about what we're teaching and why, uh, that it's in the community as much as possible, that we're doing strength-based teaching, uh, that our case management is really focused on transition, um, transition services and specialty, uh, wanting our students to lead their IEDs, emphasizing a lot of co, co-planning and teaming and the, and a strong focus on inclusion, not just for our students, but for our community as well. This is the picture part, Carrie Grease, both studies. I, anytime I can put in a graphic under it, probably myself, Carrie, uh, Carrie Grease over there, my director of secondary is hearing me on, I can hear it. So, in a traditional model, um, typically, you have a standalone building, much like what we've previously considered, and in that standalone, um, building or that standalone setting, it, we are providing employment, education, training, and independent living all in one space, so depending on the group or the student you are, you're going to go to a single space and receive all of those services, um, and so, you may have a teacher who's teaching your, all of the skills you might need in employment, education, training, and independent living, um, if we move to a more person-centered model, we're looking at the students more individually and their needs specific to employment, education, training, or independent living, and we're looking at the, the skills they need and the services they need and, and offering those to them, um, however they might need them, instead of being, um, kind of all together, receiving, uh, more of the same, if that makes sense, so separating it out. So, as we were, as we talked about what we as a, uh, as a school district needs to consider is looking at the importance of having a central hub, um, in this case, potentially Marlowe, right, as a hub for our staff and, you know, our school-based needs, potentially, uh, IED meetings and, uh, collaboration times, it's almost like an office space or a hub, there's, there's a place for that in our district where we, we employ people who work and support our, our programming, um, so as we look at how we might use Marlowe or another school in our district, using it in a, a smaller capacity, in, in that way, makes a little bit more sense, um, to us, and then looking at not one location like we had previously, but looking at multiple locations to support each of the, the needs or the areas in transition. For employment, uh, we have current job sites, we would like to carve out new job sites, those are typically in the community, and we, we would continue to expand those and carve those out, but it, but the actual, um, site that we are looking to explore next would be a local Huntley business through Visionary Properties, there's a, a business that has a property available that could offer us vocational experiences in the storefront, um, for, uh, you know, reasonable cost to us as a district, and it would allow us to support students who need services in that space, specifically focused on employment. For education training, we currently have a partnership with McHenry County College, we would look to maintain that partnership with McHenry County College, that, the purpose of that location would be to support our students in the area of education, training, their adult learning experiences, um, so for many of our students, um, we have already a very active, um, partnership where they're going on campus to McHenry County College, we have other community learning sites, when you take a class as an adult, that's a community learning site, it is considered an education, training opportunity, we have some and we need to expand more, uh, adult learning happens in lots of different ways and, and we're wanting to expand that, but we would be just maintaining, uh, currently, our, uh, partnership with McHenry County College. In the area of independent living, we would be looking at exploring, uh, partnerships, uh, expanding an MOU with Dekey Park, which would allow us to really focus on some of the independent living skills that some of our students really need in a dedicated space for that, to practice skills, um, in a, in a space that is conducive for that in our community, um, close to, um, the opportunities for rep leisure, which is something, um, critical for independent living for our young adults, and so, um, really, just in thinking about what this could look like, um, our next steps for consideration, um, really are about maintaining that partnership with MCC, exploring agreements to access these two additional community locations, and then recognizing that we also will need to explore transportation, um, I turned that out there because I do think that that's going to be a critical piece of the puzzle. Um, so our update today is, is really to provide you with an overview and some context and understanding our, our growing needs to provide research-based quality transition services to our students here in Huntley, uh, we would just, uh, you know, to appreciate the board's support of our new recommendation to, uh, utilize multiple locations versus one location, um, our next step would be to explore the costs associated with that, um, the viability of those recommendations, and, um, we will be looking to bring a proposal forward to the board in November or December. Yeah. Here's what I have.
So, there's five questions, but, and next steps for us, the recommendation from administration would be that we would look at these multiple sites, um, and so, really, nothing that would be going action to the next, uh, meeting next week, but, um, is the board willing to allow us to go look at what, we have an MOU with the Park District, but what would that look like, that might be, um, they utilized our facilities for a number of, um, different events and, and organizational things, where there are fees, what would that possibly look at, as well as coming, um, forward with this other location for both sites, um, bringing forward a lease, those would be the things that you would take action on, but don't want to go exploring those if that is not the direction of the multiple sites that the board is kind of, uh, in favor of.
I'll just leave it open to the entire board, because there's a committee of two today, it doesn't make sense, um, yeah, so anybody that has questions, go right ahead.
I guess I'll just make the comment, I think, from what my learning going through this process, there's always been multiple buildings, um, so I, I think clearly multiple buildings is, uh, it has to be part of the equation, I think the Park District and, uh, the Vine Street, is that correct?
Yeah.
Options, uh, look really intriguing, the Vine Street, I think, is a clean sheet of paper, so we could actually build it up to be exactly what we want, maybe some of the, uh, the buildings, uh, folks that we have in town to help build that up there. Um, I'll also just note the transportation thing, you have a van up there, I think that's, this is me, a critical part of what we need to do, I am, from a work-related thing, um, went through a situation like this as well, and transportation is a very key part to helping these folks who are in transition, um, right now, and having that, so we, we have to be able to support those sort of things, and that was echoed when we did the light tour earlier this year.
And, and we will probably have those, we were hoping to have those for the regular meeting next week, um, just, uh, looking at what our potential for, for both, an activity bike.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we're reaching out to, close on, and a wheelchair accessible, activity bus as well as wheelchair accessible, maybe, um, minimally, that would allow us to, you know, to have a solid center and, and offer, um, all of our students.
That may come forward next week, it probably will come in November, being that the timing of when this might come in.
Yeah.
So, in, in this model that you're discussing right now, um, how does this accommodate for any kind of growth? If we have additional students, will this, these different spaces still account for, today we have sixty, let's say that, that goes to seventy-five or eighty, um, now what happens? Are, are we back to square one, where now we've got to go back and reinvent the wheel here?
Yeah, it would be if we, if we built a standalone building or an addition, because you can only have so many people in the space at the same time, um, when you have multiple locations, you are looking at different schedules, multiple schedules, but sometimes students are in a space in the morning, they're in a space in the afternoon, they're in a space all day, depending on how much they need to access, and, uh, we aren't limited to just those locations, um, we're also looking at, when we're, um, practicing skills in the community, for example, uh, job sites, often our students are assigned to a job site, um, so they're not necessarily going to need to go to the vocational center for learning, you know, in, in that space, um, so it, it really is about flexible scheduling and, um, and supporting the, the need of the students, uh, so it, it absolutely allows for growth, um, it's the least limiting, and, and ultimately, our goal is to, to move students into the community as much as possible, so independent living, uh, one great example is rep leisure, um, we've also, you know, when we look at, um, how adults spend our time, right, we, we need to be able to practice with our young adults how to use, you know, a, a rec center or, um, a boxing club, or something that is of interest to our students, uh, our students are, are able to access, um, you know, so much more than I think we've, uh, had the opportunity to explore, and so I think it's a very exciting time in special education in particular, um, and we build capacity with our students and also the community in that way, um, so, I think it, it, it allows for a tremendous amount of growth because we, it requires us to be very individualized and getting what they need, not what we have.
And, and when you transport students, how many are in a group or in that, will, will these buses be enough, or is it a case of, well, we're going to need multiple buses here?
Yeah, so I, I don't know that exactly, um, because some of that will come down to, um, we'll have to look at all of our students and services they need, and then what's, what's schedule will allow, um, what I will say is, if we need to get our students from point A to point B, we will find a way to do that, um, and it, yeah, so, activity buses, uh, can obviously, uh, house more than our median, um, but I, I think we just have to, to do some planning around that, I just don't know yet, um, but I am confident that we will get our students.
I'm sorry to be digging into the weeds that-
No, I, I appreciate it, it, it's a necessary question, um, I mean, we're, we're ready to start that process.
And I think with the transportation, that, that might grow, right, our fleet might need to grow there, um, as student need grows, but I think another component, we don't have a, a good answer for yet, but, um, at some point, we're going to need to work within the community or within the county to look at, um, other ways, whether it's an activity bus or one of our, you know, yellow buses, students, when they leave this, their twenty, you know, second birthday, they're, they're going into adult life, how can we utilize public transportation so that they are able to practice that and have that skill set that can transition rather than, or the school district component, and so that is-
And that's part of the, right, and that's part of the program development, is that, you know, all of our students should have access, should be practicing use of public transportation, or partnering with, um, with our community public transportation, so yeah, building capacity, and that's the work that we should be doing, um, so yeah.
Yeah, I, I've spoken to bus companies, um, the last couple school board conferences, um, NIS board conferences for that matter, and those small, little white buses, they're just not producing them.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the manufacturers can't, they don't want to produce the chassis because they can't derive a good profit from it like they can from SUVs these days, so there's a, there's a back-
Yeah, so it takes about a year to get one.
Yes.
Yeah, which is why we really want to make that re, what I really wanted to come today with that recommendation, but alas, uh, I'm hoping by next, uh, by next board meeting, we'll bring-
We'll probably be coming before when they use.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, of course, right.
And even though, eight, you're waiting a year.
Yeah.
Um, especially our, our wheelchair accessible ones, which is, um, yeah, necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see my question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I think this is great, and I think, uh, I think the, uh, motivation to do stuff quickly, versus building out that's taking two to three years or whatnot, so, I like that, so, just a comment, so, I'm all for this, I'm excited for you guys, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Last call for questions on this one. Okay, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item nine, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Rincausik, any O&M update, thanks for your patience this evening.
I have a few updates for the board, um, we just finished our fifteen-mile walk around the school district, I count about fifteen thousand steps here when we do this, um, and help by safety inspection, we had a regional specification, fire marshal representative had one or two of the local fire marshals, uh, on site with us a whole time, Chief Security Officer Adam Dean and Assistant Director Kevin Mifflin, I think it went very well, um, I noticed that essentially built this- I noticed that Tensley built this team of this larger group and school administrators, representative of the schools administration went with us. Things seem to be getting better every year. Not that they weren't really good to begin with, but I'm not finding a lot of, a lot of things out there. Sorry about that. The next thing, I got a bit of news late, late this morning, early this afternoon, actually early this afternoon, when I got back. According to our partner, Forefront Power, the community solar project is not a, if it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when now, because ComEd has approved the final interconnect agreement, and Forefront has signed that agreement. And now it's just a matter of when. It looks like ComEd is already taking some steps on our property easement at the north end of our reworked property. Under the easement area that they have, they've actually carved out some ground like they're going to expect maybe put some of their work in to get the project station on 47 over to the corner of our property. And they're waiting now to get access to the site after our partner, Prouse Farms, removes his crop and does some surveying and environmental assessment detail. That will be, that will be a win for us and a win for the neighbors because, of course, everyone in the community that wants to sign up will get an opportunity to get a 10% discount rate on top of their utility bill. And we will also get an opportunity to participate up to 10% of what it produces at that discount rate if we so choose. And we, of course, will get the lease payment for use of the property, which is about five times more than what we give for a 10%. So it'll be an honor. Next thing I've got for the group is on our bus fleet installation here, the solar installation. We're in the midst of applying for our certificate of completion with ComEd right now. There's some, the formality was being followed for that. It's been tested. I've seen the commissioning reports and the electric spending reports on the installation. So we're really close to production on that little bit of solar as well to directly support cost consumption. We have eight projects that are on the list here that are very close to completion. They've got a small punch list. We continue to pursue our contractors to get out here and finish that up so we can close them out. But well, over the years, we don't pay fees unless the work is done, according to spec, and we get the proper close-off paperwork that shows that they've made the proper distributions of payments to their suppliers and subcontractors and security companies that are standing behind guaranteeing the closed project. We're in the final phase of development of the next big documents for the roof replacement for next year that was on presentation to the board back in August. That should be the last phase of roof replacement for into the mid 30s, the school district. Everything that's gone through a lifecycle now will be in good stead for quite a number of years. It should be released hopefully in November sometime for bidders. We've got a unique opportunity right now. I learned from the high school athletic department that the athletic boosters have expressed an interest in supporting funding of construction of a storage building on the track, support some of the track equipment. There used to be two small buildings, there were two small structures there. They were undersized and aged and had to be removed off of a nice concrete slat that's there that could support construction of a more permanent installation, similar to what we've done in some of our dugouts on property with maybe like masonry walls or something more durable wall structure than just a, just a lumber. And the offer for support would probably be the neighborhood of about a third of the cost based on the model that I'm envisioning. I talked to our architect about it and expressed an idea with the board's office that we should have an architect, an engineer stand by drawing for construction if such a thing. And we could play general contractor in the O and M office on a small project like this through a permitting process. And maybe outsource construction of masonry walls. And then the school, high school students have getting pretty good at constructing frame growth structures. I have done some on the property already, and we could support material purchases for that and they could build it. I talked to Mr. Wiggoff about that, and he thinks that's a viable opportunity. So it looks like we have something, something here that we're looking at old-fashioned bar raising, I guess. The next step will be to engage Vol for the small C to actually put something on paper to design it and clear out the final ones. If there's any concerns about something like that, I'd love to hear it.
What is the liability for students doing the work?
That is, that is a question I can't answer in my role here. I do know that they've done a lot of things with, they've actually, there's a lot of things going on in the CTE program right now where the students are getting hands-on experience doing all kinds of things. I saw, I was really, really surprised when I drove out of property last week and I saw someone actually doing sheet metal work with them, that there was equipment funded and provided and spread out there for them to get some hands-on experience. They built, they built shelters on soccer fields now. They built a little shed that stores the car lifts. They worked with union-grade electricians who have, the union has actually supported and Forefront Power, our solar partner, our larger solar partners funded the material for actually putting solar panels in that little storage building. The students have had experiences working on that kind of electrical work, which is a whole field of emerging field right now. I know that stuff, that sort of thing has been happening. They built the roof structures on some of the dugouts of the ball darts. I don't know if I can answer your question.
You know, obviously, if this is something, we're talking along the lines of a shed, you know, structurally, that's not as concerning as, you know, a building that would have occupants inside of it.
Oh.
But, you know, it is, it is a cost that is students' welfare in mind and, you know, not doubting their ability, but if something should go wrong, then, you know, the cost to fix it is upon us. Again, I think where we can use students to do this kind of work is great, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking around all sides of it.
We can get answers so to make sure that we have all of that.
Well, I would tell you, I would think that safety instruction is part of what they're instructed on doing, so it's just part of doing that type of hands-on work. So understand the concern, but I mean, you're not going to get around it. I mean, it's, if you allow them to do it, there's, there's always a risk.
All right. Any additional questions from the committee or the board?
I've got, I've got one other.
Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, there's one other item. It's just a little note, the first two weeks of our electric bus fleet operation, there's a little report on the cost of the energy versus one way or the other, based on information we have on track about how many miles again we get on diesel and propane compared to months we've gotten. So what I was consuming, the cost of that. There's a lot more to be learned there. This is the very beginning. We're not even in the winter season where we're going to consume or kill lots per file when we start heating the solar information. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board or the committee?
Yeah, I just had one on the, so Mr. Thompson described it as a shed. That's what I had him on line two. Is there something in our process that requires us to use an architect for everything?
My concern with this is that, although it is a shed, it's not, it's not like a student occupied, you know, space where they're in there having education where they need all the licensed equipment is that if there would be a, there would be a windstorm, like we've had a few in my career here where there's some things done, it would be nice to have on record, a document that this was designed in accordance with the recognized standards, you know, by an engineer.
But stand that kind of weather, whatever the.
Yeah, the design is, in our area, is 90 mile an hour, 20 pound snow. I used to design buildings myself, but I don't carry a license, but a period view. I can think well of where it is. And I just think that would be our best interest, and I'm sure I can get them to walk out there later when the construction is done and look it over. But when the masonry walls are built, it will be an anchor bolt pattern that will be put on the top of the framing of the walls on a bond beam, most likely if it's done that way. And then we'll have a certain pattern, and the lumber that's put on top that anchors that roof on top has to be bolted through those bolts, and that will be the beginning of probably a solid anchor rope structure that would go on there. It's this little single story structure.
Just to be clear, there's nothing in our process that requires using an architect? It's your best practice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sorry for that long answer.
Okay. Any additional questions for the O and M updates? All right, moving on then. Item nine dot two, thank you for the update. Isbe FY24 School Maintenance Grant, Project Grant, excuse me.
Yeah, we apply for this every year and when it becomes available. It's usually like the third priority that we make a cut every time. The two first priorities are, one is life safety, and there's another that escapes me that they don't qualify for. We don't have a project like that, but we've been able to get the cut each year. Our largest project is the roof replacement of high school would be our goal, but these salaries offset some of that cost. It's a $50,000 grant, national grant. Our project will always see that. But they do require board approval before we file the paperwork to determine our application for this grant. How much they've worked with.
Tony, you're the committee. Any questions? Just to make sure I get your inputs here.
I do not have any questions concerning that.
Okay. Any questions from the rest of the board? Tony, any objection with moving this forward then?
No objection. Moving forward.
All right, we will move that ahead. Move on to item nine dot three, the extension of the service agreement with thermal systems. Mr. Rinkasik again.
This service agreement is for preventive maintenance on some of our large scale equipment. Ten pieces, as a matter of fact, several chillers and rooftop initiatives, the larger, more complex equipment that weren't in my mind, having a factory service technician by surveillance on this equipment to say, keep it in a good working order. We had this service contract in existence for a long time, and we were able to negotiate them down a few percent from where they wanted to be. And this is just like everything else in there currently right now. In waiting in service, but it's something that we do need to keep this equipment up and functioning, hard body seat and ventilation.
Any questions, Mr. Quagliano?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking through the hours provided off of this, so yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Any questions from the rest of the board? All right. Any objections with moving this forward, sir?
Nope.
Tony?
Nope.
Okay. And we will move that ahead to the board next board meeting. Item nine dot four, Mr. Rinkasik, last call here, the Cheswick Killer Water System Replacement Pro.
Yeah, this was, this was on our project list last August as an FY25 project, and at this point in time, the lead time is received in the document, and I do believe that's probably not as bad as it's going to actually end up being. I've heard enough from my peers how they go from factory production, this kind of equipment and lead times. So, well, it's gotten a little better in the last 16, 18 months for my hearing from my peers, but it's still not good news. Usually the main factors are calling back, causing further delay. At this point in time, I'm expecting this to actually be an FY25 project if we order it right now. I did look at this project from the more, started with the more conventional direction of hiring engineer architect, do a bit, do a, do a specification and drawings, clear out the bid, and I wasn't satisfied with their estimate that their fees would go and what the fee was related to that were the best, the best we could do. And I explored cooperative purchasing opportunities, and I solicited three service providers who had, worked with recognized co-ops. I received two responses. This is, this is the best, the best proposal that is attached to this memorandum here. They've got all the services we need to replace this equipment. This equipment is, was created in 2000. It provides cooling for the main office, cafeteria, gym, and library, and a couple of classrooms in the 200, and more than a couple, I think it's hard to find before. And it is our 22, which I think some of the board members are tired of hearing me talking about. We're way beyond the, you know, end of life on this ashtray, end of life in the face of it, this refrigerant gas. And we just started to have problems with some of the preventive maintenance sample results on, we get samples on the water refrigerator to see, it's an indicator of how the equipment's were doing. And it hasn't been super news. Equipment's still, it's running okay, but I'd like to recommend that we move forward with this cooperative purchasing agreement. The proposal attached, this company, Midwest Mechanical, is just finishing our DX cooling at Marlowe. I was very impressed with how this project went. The engineering services were quality services. All the commissioning that I've asked for, they've had no objection providing. The results are well so far, so I have no reason not to recommend it. And we're pretty darn close to the estimate in the lifecycle report they provided as well, which I was getting nervous about very much.
What is the, the new coolant that'll be used on this one?
I haven't told me yet.
I didn't see it mentioned.
The common ones out there right now are either 134A or 410. And I don't know, the last few pieces of equipment like this we've done has been the 410, which doesn't have advanced portable case out. There's unofficial conversations going on all over the place about what the future holds, but I'm hearing that, you know, the world will just have to stop cooling anything pretty much at 410 terminated. And even if it is, there's a whole fable process that takes a long, long time.
Sure.
And it's unfortunate that 22 is just production spot a number of years ago now. So the scavenging and repurposing and all the complexities with that, cleaning it if you're going to use it, you know, what else it was mixed with and what type of equipment or anything, make it very difficult to acquire any at any reasonable price.
So we're putting it in order now for such a project that's so far down the road for installation. Do we need to put a deposit down or is there deposit, is it just a matter of the order? Is there, what's the timing on all of that?
I've always had a stance that the public school district, our financial, our credit app is usually pretty good.
Okay.
And there's no need for us to have to pay a deposit on anything.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I told them, no, and they took it off.
Okay.
No deposit. We will pay for work as for work product. They'll have to produce a performance bond, which could be in short, or there'll be a building for that. There's some engineering time to even put together the order sheets or the submittal to approve for them to order the hardware, and I told them, you know, a reasonable engineering fee for that, that they'll have to produce a schedule balance and outline those kinds of expenses, but we won't pay for things we don't get.
Okay.
We have to own it or have the, you know, have the proper, have the equipment I said they would build for on the work product.
Thank you.
Approved, built for payment.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Quagliano, any questions from your end?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple. We got 23 years out of this, the original chiller. What, not knowing anything about chillers, is there anything evolved over these 23 years that this type of chiller will last 30 years or what? I mean, what's the expectation?
The newer equipment has a much softer start, and theoretically, from the standpoint of the wear and tear of the starting and stopping of the, of the equipment should render itself to provide a little better performance. However, just like my old, the maintenance guy that used to repair appliances on the site, he said, don't get rid of that old equipment because they don't make it like they used to. Well, you know, theoretically, it should last a little bit longer. Can I say it's going to last a lot longer? I don't know that I could say that.
Yeah, no problem. I just know, know framework for knowing what the expectations, but just so that, you know, it's a big spend, and so everybody realizes, okay, you know, it's, you're going to get 20 to 25 years out of it, hopefully amortize that cost. It's not that, you know, overly horrific from that standpoint. I know it needs maintenance as you go along, but it's, you know, you get, you get some useful life out of it.
If I may, just to put some more perspective in this too, the exposure the school district has to remaining, this is our 22, a large scale, there's just a whole lot of small things, little things like people's residential air conditioner. We have a lot of those one-off room. We have a lot of those one-off rooms have something going on or a technology space or something. But on a large scale, we've got the east chiller at the high school, the four hundred ton unit. It's had, it's had an overhaul and seems to be okay. But it's having its pains of little odd names continue to fail. Well, that should be on the radar soon for the district to think about. And then Heinemann, all the, all the condensers on Heinemann, which are identical vintage everything to what the ones on Marlowe we just replaced are. And there's a couple left by Marlowe from the two thousand and seven edition. We have a lot of, you know, those are like financial burdens that are still probably looming ahead in the lifecycle. We're going to keep this district operating seamlessly mechanically.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anything else? Good?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, any objection with moving this ahead then? Mr. Quaglia?
No objection, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move that to the board meeting as well. Legislation, item ten.
All right, thank you, Mr. Troy. First thing is a two groups data privacy policy review, Ms. Hornberg.
Typically, we bring forward the policies to review when there's an update or there may be a change going in there. However, we've talked about bringing some of our policies forward on a regular basis to, one, educate. Two, to review and look at how we utilize our policies, our procedures that we have within the district. And as, wherever KPI is, it's going to be to be doing a survey. We did that with middle school, we'll be doing that with the high school here this year to get feedback from our students and our staff on that. Other variety of different surveys that we get from time to time. It's usually every other year, there is one for our secondary level, which kind of falls around. And healthy habits, safety, things like that. We have not done that in a number of years, but that is an option to the district to be able to kind of pinpoint where can we put additional resources. We've got from time to time, as we had this past month, maybe surveys are things that are requested from maybe an outside organization. We may have things through the educational world if we're looking at, maybe it's a student doing a graduate program, something like that. Where we don't do them very often, they're vetted out. But again, we did have one that the high school did push out through, high school, it was the district. It was at the high school because of a situation over there where we were working with McHenry County Department of Health. And so in having some conversations, just questions that do pop up, the district is very committed when we think about it. I pitched three different policies to this. The first one is educational philosophies and objectives. Any surveys that we do give out should be tied to our educational philosophies and objections or objectives. So that we're making sure the information we're getting and gathering is something that is beneficial for us to make decisions and around those kinds of guiding values. The second is our student and family privacy. Then we did throw in the use of educational technology, student data privacy and security doesn't really go with our surveys. However, we were recently notified by Google, their site changing some of those things when we talk about SOFA and student privacy information. This was perfect timing, so I thought we'd go ahead and put that in there, kind of not a survey, but again, how we protect our data there. And so did toss that in there as well. So while we are very conscious of what our policies and procedures say, we talked about something a little bit earlier. It is healthy to review those, look at those components and then maybe get some feedback on how can we follow what's in our policies. Maybe there's some changes, some things that maybe come with legal requirements that we're helping. For example, when we had the health epidemic, right, we had an outbreak there and how can we gather some of that feedback and information? But making sure that we are protecting our students and our families there. And so we've got HIPAA, we've got FERPA, we've got all of those things that we, that we look in. But put together, kind of, there are very many surveys that we give, but we do, from time to time, have those. And so those are outlined in the memo there. What can we do in one of our policies that talks about, is there time for families to take a look at those surveys? And I would answer that, yes, there usually should be. Sometimes there are going to be a time where maybe it's some of the ethics. I would not say that would be one where we're trying to gather feedback for educational reasons. But for the example with the, working with the health department, was that something we were able to get out in time for families to be able to review all of that? In this case, it went out, it was asked to go out to staff, students and families at the same time. But we do know that when that goes out, kids are on their phone, they're going to go and answer, open up that email and, and ask those, answer those questions, right? It was to try to gather feedback, because I don't think there's any question on, we want to be able to support, try to figure out what was potentially impacting our students. And to be able to support the investigation of the health department. Do want to point out one thing with that survey. There was a question that was asked of their minors, wasn't going out, any past our high school age students. But there was a question that they had to answer, did they have their parents' permission to be filling this out? They do mark yes, they were able to go on forward on that. And I guarantee that every one of those students that marked yes was, had already reached out to their parents, probably not, right? In that, I know some parents did have communication with their kiddos prior to and looking, hey, don't do anything now or don't fill this out, kind of to go that way. But typically, yes, we would want families to take a look at those surveys if they did have questions in them there. Procedures that if there was objections to partaking in that or the types of questions that are on there, they'd have time to fill those out with that component. And so there are procedures that go into playing with that. We do want to point out in one of the policies, I believe it's the six point one zero, the education philosophy objective or objectives. It does talk about that there would not be questions kind of around drugs, alcohol, those types of things. And I do want to be very transparent, there's one question, we did actually ask and reach out to the health department. Why, when we were talking about ECOI, was there a question that had to do with, hey, have you utilized? I think Dr. Bailey, you may get it better than for me, but it was base ones, things like that was very specific in the question. It was an optional, all of this was optional, this was an optional and you didn't have to answer it to submit. I don't believe we had any students who answered that question. And the rationale that was why that question was asked in an outbreak in a neighboring state. It was because of the sharing or the spreading of that. And so trying to see if that was all connected at all with the purpose of that. We will be ensuring that those kinds of questions have some intentionality, some decisions on our part. If a question like that should be asked in the future, those kinds of components. So we will look into feedback and making sure that we are protecting that information. Anything that we do with the health department, I do want to point out that they are bound by HIPAA and by FERPA. And a question that probably sparked some, hmm, I guess that it's all confidential, but we did have a follow-up. There hadn't been an email in about a week, week and a half to families about where, where was the process of what was going on. And so did want to share where we were at, that thanking for the collaboration that students and families and staff did have. That was helping that investigation along the line there. And it was a good intention of a phrase that was utilized, that this information is kept by the health department. Catched by the health department, not given to us as a breach of information. It's not something the district was holding, but please know that that was probably, we could have wordsmithed that a little differently. That this is not something that they hold on to for purposes other than trying to get to the root cause of the source of that. And so we will be a little bit more mindful as we come up with some of the language on that. It was, hey, it's house there, it's that house here, but they are bound by confidentiality and by HIPAA, FERPA, all of those components with that. SOFA, I don't know, either Dr. McRindall or Mr. Freemus, if either of you want to share a little bit about our apps or educational technology that we do use. Sometimes, most of the times, are those outside vendors and information about our students does have to go out, but it is protected by SOFA, the Privacy Act. And so we are actually in the midst of right now reviewing all of our apps that we utilize an outside vendor for to make sure that they do comply. Because of a change that's going to be happening here later this month with Google. And so I want to step up and kind of just share a little bit about that, that how kind of, we take this very seriously. We want to make sure that people know that information is not out there.
Drive on to friend in case we have some questions on the technical aspect of this. But our SOFA policy, we've been in place since, I think we're only a year two of this state Illinois has discussed this law. So we have to make sure we protect our students' data. Any data that we share with any of our apps has to be protected. What has come into the change is Google is now shutting down, they are requiring us to market the apps that we're using are trusted. Which means we have to go through some processes of, do we have agreement with those companies? If we don't have an agreement, we have to reach out and have something, establish one, it's a time consuming process. And so, Mr. Freemus, in his, what, within first couple of weeks of being here?
I think the week and a half.
Yeah, he started working on this and we unraveled, how many different apps are we currently utilizing in the district?
Three thousand apps have been accessed. Coming from the corporate world gave me, how'd you do, is my non-English saying. That's a large number. Seven hundred and thirty-nine of those apps are actually configured within Google Workspace. So those were automatically configured by Google when they decided that October twenty-third, they are going to shut down access. Or require it to be trusted or not within the Google Workspace. So there are a lot to go through, a lot of agreements that I have to make with those vendors. There is a consortium website that makes it a little bit easier, so we can piggyback on existing Illinois agreements. But some of them, Spotify, for example, will not sign an agreement. There are other organizations that will not sign an agreement. So have to shut down access, it's not going to be trusted.
We've been working through a process on that and Ms. Maxwell, she's our technology TOCA. She has been a key player in that and going through the most used app to start with. So we currently have sixty-four-ish, maybe eighty-four.
Trusted?
Trusted.
It was sixty-four earlier today, it is now eighty-two.
There we go, I'm being close. Of the apps trusted, and so what this means is moving forward, they're going to continue to work on those different. Learning and Innovation gave a list of different apps along with special services that we know students are accessing. So they're prioritizing those first. And then we have a process where staff can submit for additional apps for us to consider. We're going to use this as an opportunity to also condense the number of apps. So a part of that process is they will be filling out, I want to have access to this, what's the purpose, why? Ms. Maxwell, our instructional tech TOCA, will take a look at that and see, do we have something currently that is approved that can do that process for us? If so, then she'll ask along in her graphic curriculum or special services to make a decision on do we even want to consider this or not. And so then once those get approved, then Mr. Freemus' team will ensure if they're trusted and be on the list and allow to access it. So this is a huge task, a huge shout out to you and your team as well as Ms. Maxwell for that hard work. And we're just asking for a lot of patience as we continue to go through that, because we're going to find some app that just may not work. And we're just going to have to hunt for a little bit to get those going.
Mr. Freemus, there also has been the expectation of still we're at eighty-two, that have now been trusted, approved, all of that. That there, for parents to know who, who those are, that it is shared with, some of our posts on the web, or that's part of the whole agreement that we would be moving towards, right?
Well, there is a, on the website, it does state that we take their privacy seriously and we will have agreement. So we don't specifically, well, there is a link, I believe, there is a link to the actual consortium website that has all of those agreements.
Perfect, so that parents would know, hey, these are the ones that we have, we've gone through, that it goes out, they've gone through that process. That will clean that three thousand and something down with that, making sure that they have educational reasons and then anything moving forward. And this is through a change that's happening right now with Google. And so we're going to, so this time, everything has gone through that process perfectly.
It's a positive that we can take this as an opportunity to hone in and try to make sure using the right tools for our students and using the right way, but also the process.
Are you also looking at COPA compliance here as well? Are they interchangeable? Because I know there's two different age levels between the COPA and SOFA.
They're part of the same equation for us, basically. There's no consortium website that I'm aware of for COPA, so it's all, it's SOFA at this point.
What we've understood is that Illinois created SOFA and so from that it embeds naturally to COPA policies and that, so that's what we have to follow.
Thank you.
And for those who aren't sure what SOFA is, that is our Students Outlying Online Personal Protection Act.
Yeah, and the COPA is for children and I think it's thirteen and under. I think SOFA is eighteen and under. Two different levels, but yeah, thank you for the.
Questions, any feedback, anything you'd like us to consider in any of these policies and any of our procedures that we have when we are looking at surveys? Or information that is shared with outside vendors in terms of our students' data or family information?
So I'll jump in a little bit, on the survey side of things, this came up because of the health department. I had some parents reach out to me with some concerns about it, which is fair. I read the policy, personally, I think the policy is pretty sound and I think it matches what the community expects around surveys, so I think it's good there. To your point of just kind of how we go about the process, this discussion, I think is helpful. We need to make sure that there's always someone in the room worried about the students' data. We have to make sure that we're trying to protect that as much as possible. And I would add to the policy that we're always thinking about, are the parents able to opt in or opt out when it's available to us? And when I look at the policy here, there was a quick action, and I understand why, it was the McHenry County Department of Health, to the survey. But it wasn't an opportunity for some parents to reach out. I had one parent tell me to text both their kids and said, don't take it. And one had already taken it. This was like ten minutes after they got the email. So we just got to keep that in mind. I don't know that, where the data was, whether or not a twenty-four hour window would have been a big deal. I know they want that information quickly. The second thing here, and just for everybody understanding if they're not reading the policy, we make kind of a promise that if we disclose the identity of the tenet of students. There's like eight things we won't ask for, and one of them is the drug question. So glad that nobody answered it, but in some ways, we need to kind of review the survey a little bit and maybe they had a reason for it. I don't know, I think they probably could have figured out whether or not somebody had ECOI issues without asking that question.
So, and that was one, we got some legal guidance coming from the health department in the outbreak situation. That compliance with the law, I'm superseded that component there. However, in talking with the health department on, hey, what was the rationale for this based on our information? Our expectation is that we had some very good dialogue back and forth with those organizations to really understand it more than just, hey, we're trying to find out, where did you eat? What did you eat and all of those kinds of things? Because it was a lengthy survey and it was at the very end. And so Julie noted, absolutely, we will ensure those things.
Maybe we could send them a book on method over surveys so they could get the answers more quickly scientifically with one or two questions and dig into that a little bit more of a sense aside. I love the commentary about the app, I think that's really good that we're doing it. Are we prioritizing the apps? Like is Power School the first one we looked at?
Actually, Power School was the first one we looked at, but we, we received a link from the Learn Platform application, which shows how many students and or teachers have accessed that particular app. So we prioritize the larger numbers. I arbitrarily chose two hundred and fifty accesses as my line to, you know, once I hit that line, I reached out to Mr. Crindall to figure out, you know, what are our next steps? But we continue to evolve and find more and more applications that we have to look at and get agreements for.
Maybe a little bit more lighthearted, Spotify? Spotify is an approved app?
Not for it. It is not. There's no agreement. I think it's hard.
But it was one of the 3,000.
It was one of the 3,000 apps.
All right. I'm an Apple Music guy, so I don't know.
And a no, not the same topic. No, not the same topic, but it actually ties very nicely to what you were talking about earlier, too. What do we have? How do we utilize? How are we inventorying? And we're going down from 3,100, right? You know, and then going from there on, what's that process to make sure anything added in the future fits those things and has an application for it?
Welcome aboard baptism by fire.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, 10-2 legislation update. I don't have anything specific, anything to add, anybody? So we'll move on to that. For discussion, this is an opportunity to present any new topics that we would like in future board meetings. Don't leave that open for anybody.
That kind of reminded me of another discussion we had where we were doing an inventory on software utilization and licenses, open seats. If we don't have an update now, can we put that for review the next meeting?
Yes, I know with our operational efficiencies, Mr. Rammert, do you remember what month we were going to bring some of those? December. Can December be okay? Or would you like? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other? Thank you, Mr. Rammert.
One thing just, we'll probably need to add to the regular meeting is discussion about board.
Yes, that is definitely something we need to touch upon with that. And just, I guess, for everybody to know, I think we've had nine applicants for the open board position, so we'll discuss a little bit of that tonight and on the process and try to get communication out for that. Thanks for that, Ron. All right, moving to 12, Board Education, the Minute in 12-1. Any questions about the Minute? Comments? The Minute, yeah, so it's the September regular meeting, the committee of the whole in September, and then the budget hearing is also in September. Okay, with that, we'll move back forward. And then 12-2, the update on the library grant.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, some questions had kind of popped up around the library grant. It is a grant that we did a little bit more digging on, actually. The grant is due October 15th, so right around the corner of this. Perfect timing on that. Mr. Rammert, we're going to average, this is about $7,800 that we're looking at based on enrollment. Not only at this time would we be applying for the grant by October 15th, again, very small, but we would also then be submitting, this is for FY '25, but we would be submitting reimbursement invoices for FY '22. So Dr. McCrindall talked a little bit about kind of done in arrears of when things are paid in reimbursement and whatnot. So the grant is a little bit different than most of our other grants that are out there with some components there. So wanted to go ahead and look at applying for that grant, what implications that might have on the district to be able to utilize. And so that was centered around Public Act 103-0100, and looking at that approval in, I believe it was June, correct? With, in a nutshell, it's taking this, that all public, which would be school libraries, would have to follow the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. And so I pulled the three different policies that we have in our district that kind of look at resources and materials and what is our process around selecting materials. And so that's instruction, Policy 6-212, instructional resources and selection of instructional slash media resources. Policy 6-230, which is library media program, that one actually does reference the Library Bill of Rights in that. And then 6-235, which is access to electronic networks, because there was some conversation about a language that was in this act around digital conduct, digital materials rather than just our current resources. And so in looking at these policies, some were, one was revised in June of this year, others have been in place for a couple of years, one actually in 2012. So I'm not sure if that one will have a press update. But the one where it talks about the library media program was actually adopted in 2009, revised in June of 2023 this year, which would have been either right around or slightly before the Public Act was signed in. And this is the one that talks about really that selection process of resources for our libraries, our media centers there. And then the program is guided by the principles of the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. So that had been in there prior to the approval or the signing of this Public Act there. So in looking at that, we have processes that are done in all of our buildings. Curriculum kind of oversees some of those, about how materials are selected for each of our media centers. Things that we are looking at are things that are age-appropriate, things that are at our high school and not necessarily in our K-2 libraries and things like that. And so then did reach out just for some legal interpretation of, the way I was reading is that, yes, we've got this Public Act, we references the Library Association's Bill of Rights there, all of that, but do we still have that autonomy to be able to select materials that we would be putting in each of our libraries? And the answer I got was yes. We still have that process. If a policy from press would come and change that, it would have to come through the board at that time. But based on the policies that we have there, the selection process that we have is something that we can continue to do. Now, looking a little deeper was if there was something, it's like talking about book bans and all those kinds of things, if there was something that contradicted this Library Bill of Rights, what would the ramifications be and potential provoking of the funds of the $7,800? And so that is a potential down, not necessarily a, this is what would happen. And so at this time, my recommendation is that we still move forward for that funding. I know it's only $7,800, but when we talk about grants there, because our policies really drive how we select our materials, we've changed the things that we have currently and past practice done to select materials in there. And if there was something that came up, we would certainly bring that forward to the board before making any determination through what that impact could be for that time. So was that kind of what you were looking for on how it would potentially impact our day-to-day operations with that and the policies that we have, or would you look?
And I think, I guess, when I look at this, there's three or four concerns that I have about the bill's written. First of all, it's political popcorn. This is done just to make a statement so that somebody can make a political point. It really isn't addressing the wrong. But the way it's written, there was an amendment added saying, including digital resources. I don't think the state has defined that. It's not defined in the bill. And it, me, it's something that can be widely interpreted. Digital resources would suggest to me a website. And if you go to a public library, the internet is wide open, right? If you go to our Chromebooks or if you go into our library, it is not wide open, right? And certainly not going to be wide open in the K-2 schools, you know, and there may be more and more access as you get older, which I think we can all agree with. So to me, that's something that needs to be understood because I have lots of parents who talk about they want good protection on the Chromebooks. And if this signing up this bill says we can't do that, because if you look at the American Bill of Rights, all people, regardless of origin, age, background, reviews, possess a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library. So there's two things that come from that statement, which is any kid 3, 4, 5 years old has access confidentiality. So if you tie that to the bill, to all digital resources, as a parent, I'm concerned. I don't want to make the internet wide open. I don't think that would be intense behind this, but it's poorly written. The second thing to that is has a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library use. I understand that many teachers will send out, hey, here's a list of 10 books. Let us know if there's any books you don't want your kid to read. The way I read this is we're not allowed to do that anymore. And a parent's not even allowed to ask what their kid is reading, and the school's not even allowed to track it. So if we read the bill and the Bill of Rights, now if we can strike out age, probably okay. And I'm not talking about home library, I don't care what they got there. But the school libraries, I think we expect a little bit more protection. The last one that I would bring up, and there's probably more here, is libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view. So when we look at that, do we want to open ourselves up to someone demanding a view that is clearly not correct? Library Congress can have every book, right? Home library, you can have many books. Do we need to have McCabins have a book pro whatever is out of phase right now? I don't, I think we want the ability to restrict on that. And that's what my concern is about this. Again, from a political perspective, totally get it. Library Congress, have everything. Some of the public libraries, have everything. This is a public school library, there should be a little bit more containment on that. We're making good selections.
And right now, unless directed differently, we would continue our practices of, one of those is parents aren't able to go in through our destiny, and if there are books that they would not want them to check out, they can actually mark or talk to the media staff where they would be able to mark those in there at all levels, I believe. We would still have it there, that list at the K-2 level. We're looking at some materials that are age-appropriate. That Library Bill of Rights, like you said, in Policy, Library Media Program, Policy 6-230, it does talk about that. And these have been the processes and the procedures that we have had in place for quite some time with that even in their age. We've got, Mr. Primes, I don't want to throw you under what are our different components on there, because we're really quick to work today, but we do have different filtering systems or filtering settings for our K-2 that changes at that third grade level, and that is our intention that that would not be changing. I will tell you that if there was something, you talked about, what is that, state must define that, and I think this takes into effect in January. And so some of that probably is still in the works of what is that defining mechanism going to be? That's got to be pushed out. Again, if that were to change a policy, we would have to be bringing that forward. When we get that interpretation, we can certainly bring that forward to talk about, does this change any of the practices or procedures that we would have in the district? And again, we're applying for something that two years from now would be reimbursable, so it would not necessarily impact the, being able to apply for the grant now, and then if we were to, you know, make some changes down the road, we'd be absolutely at, you know, that time, and we would be bringing that forward as a discussion of what does that interpretation mean for our school district and specifically our school district.
I think, I think something that I need to see, and probably all of us as a district need to better understand is what is our internal process? Because regardless if we can, you know, tell the state to go pound sand because we don't like, you know, we are in disagreement, I want to be able to understand how materials are approved within our own district. And because we are also now starting on a path of fostering deeper relationships with our parents and our teachers, I would like this to be a conversation that we have during this process. We're not going to make everyone happy, but I think there are some common sense materials that don't belong in our school. And I think before, you know, we really go too far down this road internally, is the direction that we need to explore.
So last meeting, we talked a little bit about some of the curricular objections, things like that, what are mandates, what are things our parents can have some discussion on and decision-making on. And so one of the things that the curriculum department, we've all kind of taken a look at that, and it's almost ready to bring forward, and we will be bringing that, this can tie very nicely in there, is about kind of what are those mandates, what can you be exempt from, and then what are the processes if you are objecting to that, that there may be alternative materials, or what are those mandates that you can't? So there's a whole process with that, and we can absolutely bring the selection forward with that, with that would tie very nicely together.
Yeah, I heard you said one of the, Ms. Wittman, to your, one of your three points, the digital resources, I did take a look at the American Library Association. It's interesting, you're right, the definition didn't be clear. I'm amazed because they put on there, they always refer to it as digital resources and services. And so I don't know, I would assume maybe you have services, might be a potential different tool where they find a resource of like the book you're going to have to kill a knocking bird on your, you know, on the Chromebook and also on our copy. So it's interesting to put that in there. So good question, we can look into that, but that is something I noticed between what American Library Association recommends versus this law.
Right. And again, it's, this is a sensitive issue, and a lot of people are jumping to conclusions on it, I'm sure. But we need to look at this, and the laws and the languages matter. And we need to understand it. And I'm a little frustrated because IASB has not given any updates on this from ours, I can tell, maybe others have found it, but they have not. This bill has been out there for a while, it's been talked about, and they've been silent on it. And the state hasn't really given any good direction on it.
And I'm not sure, yeah, we were looking at a variety of different components on those different organizations. I wonder, I'm not sure, I'm wondering if part of that stance will come when that interpretation or that definition of what does this actually, the state library will be putting forth kind of, what does this mean for public libraries and school libraries and some of those, if that stance will come once we get that defined.
And it could be. And just one other thing, I do think the bill allows us to kind of structure our own Bill of Rights, if you will. So that might be another way to look at this, and we can strike things like age, right? And we could say, no, it's appropriate to restrict certain content to some ages, especially parents object to it, and try to build some of those, if that's what we choose to do. So, sorry, just to refer, did you have something?
No, so your comment about IASB, I don't know that IASB necessarily goes and takes a stance on something until there are school districts that vote on it at the annual conference where somebody actually puts proposals so that IASB can advocate with the legislature's, legislature the way that they do. So until there's a position that's taken in general by school districts, I don't believe that IASB just goes ahead and says, we're going to advocate here, here's our line in the sand, and then let the line in the sand be moved. I think it's up to school districts to make that initial proposal to draw that line in the sand and let that discussion and debate occur at the annual conference.
Thank you. That's a good point. So again, personal view is I'm not sure what $8,000 is worth the risk. That's me.
But are we under a deadline to apply for this? Is it?
Interesting.
So that's prior to our next, October 15th, is what you're saying, right? And this wasn't an agenda item for a vote right now? So what, are we just assuming status quo?
With the grants, typically we search for those, for bringing different things to bringing additional revenue and resources to the district. And so those grants are usually brought forward to the board for approval. So our recommendation, my recommendation is that we would apply for this. I know it's a small amount of money. And then, but again, you're not committed to having that, and they don't pay in reimburse for the things for that year. This is a funky one because the law takes place in January. And so I think we should apply for it if things were to change and we get more clear thing, definitely, we just don't.
We can withdraw our.
You're declining it. You're ultimately declining it or give it back.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes.
Any other comments, Ms. Buggna, or Laura?
I'm just going to ask, I know we asked at the board meeting last time about the age, because the ALA has changed their young adult age group. So are our books in our libraries at a certain age that we have to adopt that as a tie to this? No? Okay. So just like you said, we can add as needed. If we need it, can we remove as needed, too?
Yeah, so we have a current.
Yeah, so we have a current process, the last fall, we, well, a year ago, we did, we updated our internal procedures for how we review, approve and select books for the library. And so there is a process within there that if there is a request for like objecting to a material or book that a parent or community member or whomever could put in and then it goes through a review process where that includes starting with the librarians, the building level institutions, some district level teams and decide to officially remove it. There is a process to do that. And we can agree on all, we use objections more than all the different factors. But we could have that.
So like at the high school, when that foyer was, last time, and two people that should have high school. That's something, I mean, we know what the process is. I'd like to know that.
So that was how we certified, right? Was that, if I recall in that foyer correctly, you wanted to certify? We also, we don't have a certified library media specialist in each one of our, well, you have to have at least one in the district to kind of manage that. But it's the process that we have other staff that are employed in each one of our media centers who would be part of that process as well as sometimes the curriculum, maybe an administrator if it needed to go up. So it's not just two people reading. We have somebody in every library.
So that would be like some, everybody's on the same page. Because I know like in the curriculum thing, not everybody's on the same page that you referenced. So that is a concern of mine as far as like, are we all interpreting this the way it should be? And because libraries are gatekeepers of books. And so it's very important to guard our district on that. So I want to be really intentional as far as finding that info. So I'd love to hear your report on that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just a real quick, and Jessica, what was the other policy? You rattled off three policies.
Hi, I'm sorry. Which ones do you have?
I have 212, 230, and then I missed the third one.
235?
That's the one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if we could get those in the minutes, I think it would be helpful for anybody reviewing it.
I could actually test them.
All right. With that, again, that discussion, again, I know it's a hot button issue and there's a lot of people thinking about it. Nobody here talked about banning books. We all talked about the access to what's out there to make that clear to everyone. So if there are concerns, poorly written laws create unintended consequences. That's what it comes down to. So that, there's no other commentary. I will move to 13, which is to, we'll make a motion to move into closed session at 9:23 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fireliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
All right, that's that. We will move into closed session.
Tony, we'll dial you up. I'm sure.
Perfect, thank you.